Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the November 1st regular monthly meeting of the Tiverton Planning Board. And happy Halloween, everybody. So, I'm just going to ask if the people representing Lake Road Acres, I see Matt Chappell, I see Bill Smith, and I see Mr. LeBlanc, so if you'd like to come up. This is a, well, let me start actually with a roll call, and then while you're getting settled. So, Rosemary Eva, Amanda Sousa Vieira, Adam Raposa, Peter Romanti, Christine Shea, Janice Gomes, Chris Schreiber expects to be here, but he's late. And I'm Stu Hardy, and I'm here. And we, as always, have Todd Romano, our legal counsel, and Ashley Sweet to my left. And we also have Ed Rotella, the land use clerk, and Rick Rogers is on his way, DPW director. And also, we have Nathan Michael, who is our new consulting engineer, also with the same firm that Ashley is with. So, welcome, everybody. And so, we're starting out with Lake Road Acres. And this is at 458 Lake Road. It's a five lot rural compound. It's roughly, well, it's just short of 30 acres. Is that correct, Richard? And it's directly across the street from Jacklin Way on the west side of Lake Road. And it's in a, it's in an R-80 zone, and it involves a private road, Hinter Way, which will be maintained by the homeowners' association. And so, this hearing is, public hearing is continued from October 4. And so, at this point, I would like to, since we have a public hearing, I would like to ask if anybody in the audience would like to be heard. And then I would like to go directly into our regular business session. So, anybody from the audience would like to be heard, have anything to say on this? Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public hearing. I don't need a vote on that, do I? And then, I would like to call on Ashley, if you're ready, Ashley, if you're not. I can give a little more background on this. Would you like to give some background, or would you like me to?
I can do that.
Okay.
Before Ashley talks, could I say a few things?
Into the microphone.
I'm sorry. Before Ashley takes the floor, could I come in and say a couple things?
Yes.
Clarifications.
Sure.
No, no, before Ashley, oh, she's going to start first?
No, no, you're going to start.
You just asked.
You're going to start.
No. I know, I just want to say, I had been up at the site when they were asphalting the other day, and it looks very good. But I do have a couple clarifications when Bill, I guess Bill's going to speak too, on the plan.
Be happy to talk about the adjustments that we made that were prompted from the last meeting. You can do that out, how do you have your?
Well, I was going to question you.
Okay.
You made the comments. I thought Ashley was going to make.
Well, I'm wondering if it doesn't make sense for the applicant to give an overview of updates that they've made before we, and that might answer some of Rosemary's questions.
Yes, it certainly will.
And then we could proceed from there.
Thank you, Natalie.
That's a good idea.
We can certainly do that. I know there were a number of, obviously, I wasn't here last month, just filling in, but there obviously were a number of supporting documents that were required. My firms are working closely with Todd to get those finalized. I think that we have, we're very close, there are a few clerical things. Obviously, we can't plug in the final plan information until we know we have a final plan, so just things like that, a couple typos, I know. And then, we did hear from DPW. I know that they have reviewed the plans. They're happy with the lot layout, stormwater mitigation, erosion control plan, and the road layout. We also heard from the Tiverton Police Department, who spoke with the fire department, who said that the, that lights that I know were brought up last meeting were not going to be required, given that it is a private road. And then, I'll have Bill speak directly to the changes that were requested for the plan.
So, one of the things that we had done, because as of July 1st, the DEM weapons regulations changed, and that impacted the local setbacks as well. So, we eliminated the town setback that no longer is applicable, if that's the correct word. We adjusted, we changed the line type so that we could show the lot lines a little clearer. It's just, the plan was so busy with the stone walls and the boundary lines and that sort of thing, it was a little unclear as to where the lines actually fell, and this plan kind of demonstrates that a little bit easier. And one of the, the other thing we eliminated was the affordable lot that we had talked about with the board at the last meeting. Those were the substantive changes. I did notice a couple of typos, I tried to clean those up before Rosemary caught me. But that's basically the adjustments that were made to the plans.
Okay. Thanks, Rosemary, one or two?
I do have a couple of things. When I was out in, the project looks very good, from what I've seen, and I'm talking to Bucky and everything. The house for the, I don't think the board knows, but the original house is going to go away?
Yes.
Okay. And will that be shown on the plan, the recorded plan? Or, I don't know, your plans?
So, the house is still there now?
Right now.
And that will be a separate lot that will encompass the existing house. Developers looked at it, and the foundation system is in pretty rough shape, and it really is in need of a teardown, as opposed to trying to rehab it. So, I think we have to show what's on the plan. We have submitted to DEM for proof septic system plan. That was also included in the suitability determination from DEM. We have submitted, and we've gotten that plan back approved, the septic system plan back approved for a replacement house there.
Great. And just for transparency's sake, I wanted to bring it up.
Excuse me, Ms. Eva.
Yes.
If that house is going to be demolished, why don't we include a note on your plan?
Thank you.
That is to be demolished.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't want anyone to hold you to having, to keeping that house there, is my point.
No, we don't, we're not going, we can't. It's a disaster.
Right.
It will greatly improve the site.
To be removed.
Yeah. I was going to ask for a note on the plan, I'm not sure if it's already there, on the recorded plan, whatever goes in, that there be no further subdivision of the property. Is it on that? It's in the regs that say you have to do it. It's on the plan set title sheet, but I want to see it on the recorded plan.
Note number 16 on the plans, it'll be recorded, say, "The lots proposed in this rural compound subdivision shall be restricted from any further subdivision, creating additional lots."
Great, I was reviewing the requirements, and did the board, or maybe I don't have to, I mean, we have a letter from the fire department about the cistern. Did we vote on that? Or do we have to vote on that? It's a requirement.
There was discussion about it at the last meeting?
Discussion, but I don't think we voted on it. Didn't have it in my.
I think the letter states that it's cistern be provided, or some other means of adequate fire protection, and speaking with the fire department, the proposal, the houses be sprinkled with the cistern, and that was an acceptable alternative in their letter.
We actually have a letter from the fire marshal saying that the sprinkler system is a suitable substitution. So, I don't think we have to take any action.
We did put a note on the plan. "All dwellings shall be equipped with residential sprinkler systems conforming to the NFPA and the Rhode Island Building Code."
All right.
So, let me suggest two things, then, to address your question. One, a vote by the board, because you're waiving the cistern requirement and replacing it with an equal, I'll call it, by the fire marshal. Two, and we have a note on the plan indicating cistern to be replaced by sprinklers.
We have that on there.
You do.
Okay.
I haven't seen that, so.
So, I'd like to make a motion right now to waive the requirement in our subdivision regulations for a cistern for fire suppression, and replace that with sprinklers, based on the recommendation of Lieutenant Dan Murphy, Tiverton Fire Marshal.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing, no discussion.
Have you just add to that? And as noted in note 15 on the plan?
And, yes, excellent. As noted in, as noted in note 15 on the plan. Yes, so my motion is amended. And with that amendment, all those in favor, it is unanimous.
And it's my understanding that the homeowners, as we have done in the past, has to be recorded, established and recorded.
Yes, I've been presented with a homeowners' association agreement. As Mr. Chappell indicated, there are some technical errors or corrections we're going to make. You need to insert the final plan name and date and recording information, and that will all be approved by me, and can be administratively approved.
But it will be done before it's recorded in legislation, right?
I don't understand.
We've always had it established with the Secretary of, wherever, the state, and...
You're asking for creation of the homeowners' association itself through the Secretary of State's office?
Correct, before stamping.
Will that be done?
Absolutely. I mean, once it's approved, you know, once we reach our final, you know, everything will have to be finalized, as far as, you know, the, not only the homeowners, but the conservation easements that have gone back and forth prior to recording anything here.
Right, so those legal documents will come in later.
And they'll also be recorded.
But we will not stamp, sign, and record the final plan until we get all of the legal documents.
Of course.
That's our.
The plan does reference that a homeowner's association will be established for the major city.
No, we had to just finalize these before.
There is a connection between the two.
Ms. Eva, what I can suggest is that the applicant, or as a condition of approval, the applicant submits the letters of incorporation with the Secretary of State before final approval is granted.
Great.
And the plans are stamped, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
It's been upheld.
Yes.
Good.
So, Ashley, would you like to refresh everybody's memory on all of the materials that have come in, perhaps, or?
Well, I provided you with a memo that outlines the application itself, which I won't go over again. I've provided you with a list of the facts of the application, when it was submitted, which I'm just noticing now is blank, because I went to go work for that and didn't fill it in. That it was certified complete on September 20th, and the time clock to make a decision expires on December 23rd, making reference to the date on the plans and who they're prepared by. And then I provided you with some draft findings of fact, and some draft conditions of approval, to which I have just added a couple, as we have discussed them. And I don't know if anyone has any other conditions of approval to add.
Ashley, I must compliment you, it was a very good memo.
Thank you.
And on page three, the hunters should be hinters.
I was told that.
The two, it's on the third paragraph.
It's a horse!
I learned that after the memo.
And the signs up on the road already?
So, it's H-I?
Yes.
Okay.
Apostrophe.
That's fixed.
I'd just like to mention, Ashley, that there was some correspondence from Rick Rogers in email form, and Rick was responding to our earlier discussion, and I say Rick at the back of the room. And Rick, Rick ended up sending us two emails on October 28. And he talked about work on Hinter Way and drainage, and which he said is acceptable, with the recommendation that Civil Engineering Concepts states in writing that road system is conforming to plan, and that Civil Engineering Concepts, which is Bill Smith's organization, also inspect the intersection of Hinter Way and Lake Road, to be certain that the installed drainage is performing satisfactorily. Rick, if I got that right, we could perhaps add that to the conditions. This would be, this would be a condition that Civil Engineering Concepts inspect the property to make sure that the road and drainage is working satisfactorily. Rick, you can come on up and speak right into the mic, if you have, and then we can make this a condition.
Thank you, Stu. And the rationale for that, Mr. LeBlanc, Bill, is simply that, because I have reviewed some of the work, Bill has been inspecting it, but the work was done before the plan, planning board meeting, and the plans are approved. So, simply stated, DPW's recommendation is that the engineer who inspected it says that the installed work matches the plans, or if builders are changed, say it was installed with the exception of this and this. So, in other words, sort of the cot was before the horse on this, so, to get things in a line. And simply, as Bill has discussed with me on a couple of occasions, the slope is very minimal at the intersection of Lake and Hinter's Way. So, it's definitely DPW's recommendation that Civil Engineering Concepts keeps an eye on it for a few rainstorms, to make sure it's operating correctly.
And I have that. Every time it rains, I've announced there, in accordance with the stormwater requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. That's a great, that's a great suggestion, we'll make that a condition. And I'd like to call on Nathan, to see if, Nathan, did you have any comments on this, or, I'm not even sure that you've had the time to review it, since you're brand new.
No, I didn't get a set of these plans.
That's fine, that's fine. Just didn't want to cut you out of the picture. So, I, you know, I went through a huge pile of material, in addition to correspondence from Rick Rogers and Lieutenant Murphy, the fire marshal. We have a copy of the warranty deed, we have the open space management plan, we have a copy of correspondence from RIDEM, dealing with the insignificant alteration of wetlands permit. We have a description of the homeowners' association, or I guess what we'd call the homeowners' association charter, that you will be registering with the Secretary of State.
Yeah, that's, oh, yeah, that's all but finalized.
And we have an open space conservation easement and declaration of restrictive covenants. So, I couldn't think of anything more that we could, that we need. I think we covered the entire checklist of items, but Ashley is the gatekeeper for what needs to be presented, and so, can you think of anything that hasn't been?
No.
Good. Okay, so, I think we're ready to move forward, perhaps with, how would you suggest how we do this? This is going to be something brand new, that the planning board has never done in my time. This will be, in one vote, we will be dealing with findings of fact, conditions, and preliminary plan approval. In one vote, all three of those things. So, should I simply, and Ashley has been kind enough to put it all on paper, actually, you have ones that I don't have, so maybe you should read, maybe you should read this. And I will make the motion, but you can actually read it, because you have a couple of new conditions that have just come up tonight.
So, my recommendation is that you make a motion, based on the memo that was provided to you by the planner.
Right.
And then we can say, as amended at the meeting, and I can read the conditions that we've added.
Mm-hmm.
And that will take care of your conditions of approval, that will take care of your findings of fact, all in one motion. I include, as you were, as you were doing it, I was including a motion to waive the cistern requirements. You've already voted on that independently, but I want to make sure that, you know, the board understands that it's my job to hear you guys talking about that, and incorporate it in as you're talking, so that we can amend it. And that way, you don't have separate votes that are doing separate things on the same application.
Yes, 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 of course.
Everything ends in one decision.
Of course.
All of the pieces are in one place.
All of the pieces are together in one place.
Yes.
You're absolutely right. I'm just reverting to these bad old ways.
That's okay, we'll work on it. We'll get there.
So, let's, we can do that again.
I have included it as a condition of approval, as part of your decision. So, we can reiterate it, and then it's done twice.
Can I ask a question, Ashley?
Of course.
This, will this motion be to final on the preliminary and final plan?
So, part of the condition is that final approval will be granted administratively upon the submission of, and then I listed two items, and then we've got four other conditions that we just came up with, as discussed. So, you'll be granting the preliminary based on those four conditions, plus the fifth, plus the fifth, which is to grant final administratively, once we take care of other items. And I can actually remove this one, because we have written comments from DPW, so we can take care, we can cross that one out. Is that, is everyone comfortable with that?
Ashley, could you read what you have?
Yes.
Just so everybody, everybody, including people in the audience, can hear.
Yep.
What you have, because you're the, you're controlling the paperwork here.
So, do you want me to read just the added conditions?
I think that you should read the conditions, all of the conditions, 100% of the conditions.
Yep.
And maybe the findings of fact as well. Just read those.
Okay.
Or, or actually, since no changes were made, except for the typo, that.
Yep.
I could do that, I can read the findings of fact. Why don't you start out with the conditions?
Okay.
I'll go to findings of fact, and then we'll do the final, the one and all vote, that everything is included in.
So, the conditions of approval that were provided to you in the memo is that final approval will be granted administratively upon the submission of the following items, and that is an updated warranty deed, homeowners' association documents, and the conservation easements acceptable to the town solicitor. The additional conditions were that we will make a note on the plan that the existing house will be demolished, that the, that a waiver of the fire cistern requirement is granted, as approved by the fire marshal, to be replaced with a sprinkler system for each home, as identified in note 15 on the plans, that the creation of the homeowners' association will occur prior to a final approval being recorded, and that Civil Engineering Concepts will inspect the intersection of Lake Road and Hinter's Way, to ensure that the drainage is functioning adequately, and that the installed drainage for the roadway matches the approved plans recorded with the town.
Excuse me, how long is he required to inspect? Right, you don't want, you need to set a timeframe on how long he's required to go out there and inspect. I don't want you to come back to me in five years, Rosemary, and say, "Bill's not going out there and inspect."
Great.
As an example.
The road has been paved, and I've witnessed it through several rainstorms. It is, it is working adequately. It's certainly eliminated the big puddle that used to be on Lake Road that's there. As part of the DEM requirements for the wetlands permit and the ripdies permit were required, as long as the site is, until the site is stabilized, I have to inspect it after every rainstorm greater than a half an inch. So, I will continue to do that, either for the planning board, or for DEM, or for both. So, I will be involved in it. But I can, I'm comfortable writing a letter that you'll have in the next day, that says that I, you know, we had inspected it, it conforms with the plan, or substantially conforms with the plan.
When will the final coat go on? After the construction, or?
Two weeks.
Will that affect, what?
The final coat is on the road.
That is the final that I saw going on? Okay.
Three and a half inches, two inches on the bottom, inch and a half on the top.
I know, my shoes.
You were there.
Rick, did you have anything you'd like to say?
No, well, yes, I guess, but in answer to Todd's point, and maybe yours, Stu, as long as Bill has inspected it through three rainstorms, DPW is satisfied with that.
So, your job is done, Bill.
So, then I'm going to change the condition to Civil Engineering Concepts will provide a letter that the intersection has been inspected, and that it is, that the drainage is functioning adequately, and that the installed drainage matches the approved plans. Agreed?
We did add one, we had, so there's been a slight change to that, and I did discuss that with Rick. Where further down Lake Road, where we tie into the culvert they crossed, this street, he preferred to have a drain manhole there, catch basin, as opposed to just a flared end, because it was close to the road, it created a traffic hazard. So, we ended up putting the structure there, filling around it, so it's a little safer, you've got a little bit more distance off of the edge of the road, before a car could actually injure itself. So, I would probably say that it's substantially in accordance with the plan, and I can cite the differences, if that's acceptable.
And if I may say, it's a significant improvement, and I thank Mr. LeBlanc and Bill for doing that.
Okay. Okay, and I'd like to just very, very briefly go through the findings of fact. So, our first finding is consistency with the comprehensive community plan. The town's comprehensive plan makes several references to the desire to encourage rural residential developments, especially in the R-80 zoning district, and this is a rural compound, one of the three types of rural residential developments. The comprehensive plan identifies rural residential compounds as an alternative to conventional development that can protect character-defining features of a site. This site is located in an R-80 district, and is a preferred location for rural residential compound development, making this proposal consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The next criteria is consistency with zoning and the purposes of zoning. All of the lots in the application, as proposed, meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance for lot size, lot dimension, and use. The third criteria in our list of findings is, will the, will the development have any negative environmental impacts? And the response, the positive response is, the application has obtained subdivision suitability from RIDEM. The applicant has a preliminary determination from RIDEM with regards to wetlands on the site under the zoning, under the zoning designated to the site R-80. The permissible density for the site is 13 lots. The applicant is proposed, has proposed five lots, a reduction of approximately 51.5%. This reduction in density will provide for a lesser impact on the property and the local environment. And the fourth criteria has to do with the creation of lots with physical constraints to development. And the response to that criteria is, the subject property has frontage on Lake Road. Access to the proposed lots will be... Access to the proposed lots will be through a private gravel road, Hinter's Way, creating frontage for lots two, three, four, and five. Lot one will have frontage from Lake Road, and Hinter's Way is a pre, and, and Hinter's Way, and is a pre-existing house to be torn down. None of the proposed lots will have any physical constraints to development as proposed. And then the final criteria in our findings is, does the land have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street? The plan proposes to create a private compound driveway, roadway, that will create the required frontage and access for the lots within the subdivision. All lots in the subdivision will have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street by way of a private compound roadway. So those are just for informational purposes, and that's all part of our motion. Those are the findings of fact. So now, I think we're ready to go to a motion to approve the conditions as read by Ashley, to approve the findings of fact as read by me, and to provide approval, conditional approval for the master plan, for the preliminary plan. Did I get that right, Ashley, or is there more to our?
And for final to be approved administratively.
And, yes, and, and for the final plan to be approved administratively upon, upon the submission of all of the required legal documents, which we've gone through tonight. So it will not, it will not be stamped, signed, and recorded until that happens, but it can be done administratively, and you don't have to come back. You weren't going to have to come back anyhow, because we were promising to do both things. But tonight, we're doing it with one, just one motion, a huge motion, but a one motion. So I'm making that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Janice? Is there discussion on this motion? Seeing, hearing, no discussion, all of those in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And good, and good luck with the project. I think it's going to be a real asset to the town of Tiverton. It's a beautiful piece of land.
It's a lovely project.
Thank you, everybody.
And now.
Can we just make an announcement? Oxford's going to continue in case?
Yes, that's an excellent idea.
We can go on later, but.
While, while, while Pacasset Reserve is getting organized and getting ready to come up, I'd just like to make a quick announcement that the third item on our agenda tonight has been dropped, dropped this afternoon by the applicant, and that is Souza Road condominiums. This is the mixed-use project roughly at the corner of Souza and Main Road on roughly 10 acres of land. That also involves a comprehensive permit because there would be some affordable housing units. And this is a project that we have already reviewed in a, in a concept plan review, gee, probably six months ago. Very interesting project, and, and I think got a very positive feedback from the planning board. We were hoping to start the, the hearing on the master plan tonight, but that, that will be delayed, but we are going to try to put it on our agenda. Can't guarantee this, but I think it's almost certain that we can get it on the agenda in two weeks, which was November 15. And that will be a special meeting, so we'll, we'll hear from Oxford Development Group about Souza Road condominiums in two weeks, so.
So it's canceled for tonight?
So it's, it's canceled for, for tonight. Now, the, so the second item is Pacasset Reserve, and, and this, and this, of course, is.
So, Mr. Harding?
Yes.
You were just making that announcement right now.
Yes.
Later, open the hearing, continue automatically to the 15th, correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes. No, that, that will be done under planning board business.
Just wanted to make it clear.
So just, just to, a little bit of background about where we stand with Pacasset Reserve. This is formerly Tiverton Heights, and it's roughly 136 acres with frontage on both Souza and Fish. It involves 275 residential units in two phases. 25% of the units will be low and moderate income, and therefore, it's a comprehensive permit project. We have, we began this process way back in 2016 and approved the master plan back then. Then there was a hiatus of several years because of the economy and because of engineering issues, and we began to rehear the, the project about a year ago. And I, I'm hoping that we can actually approve the preliminary plan tonight. This is a public hearing. I will be closing the public hearing right after, right after I ask if anybody from the public has comments, but I'd like to hear if, if the applicant, and I, and I see both Chris Harkins, the applicant, and the legal counsel, Bill Landry, are sitting in the hot seat. Do you, do you have any comments that you'd like to make? We are in receipt of the, of the engineering report on the, on the seismic vibration, and we actually have a comment from our own consulting engineer on that same issue. We also have somebody here from the school department. I don't see Superintendent Sanchioni. Oh, is that, that's who you are. I knew you looked familiar, but I thought you must be a lawyer, because you were wearing a tie. Okay, excellent, so we'll be, we'll be calling on them. And then after, I, I think probably what we'll do is we'll, I'll, I'll ask the applicant for any comments you have right now. Then I'll call on the structural engineer to report on blasting and vibration, and then we'll go to the school issue. And the school issue is, is primarily focused on how to pick the kids up, how to, how to bus the kids to the school, and then get them back in the afternoon. If that's agreeable to you, Chris, and, and Bill, then that, that's how we'll do it. And then I'll ask the public if they have any questions, and then I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll go into, because I think we're ready to now go into a conditional approval of the preliminary plan. So the floor is yours, Chris?
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you. For the record, William Landry representing the applicant. We do have Andrew Michaud, the seismic engineer, he came from New Hampshire. His report was very brief and not easily understandable by most people. I think it requires a little elaboration on what all of those graphs mean in a very, very concise way. So we'd certainly like to have him address that issue. We have seen the draft conditions, the one relating to the seismic and, you know, the suggestion of a particular setback there, I think that'll come into focus more clearly following Mr. Michaud's comments. There are two other aspects of the, of the draft conditions that I think we'd like to have some further input on again very, very briefly. There's a condition that the interior of the, of the development, that the sidewalks be concrete as opposed to asphalt, not necessarily opposed to that, it's a big cost issue, but, but that's something we, we certainly could consider. The problem of concrete, of concrete sidewalks on Souza Road and Fish Road is problematic for a number of different reasons. It's not clear what the condition meant about how much of Souza Road would have to be benefited by a, by a sidewalk that we constructed. It said toward, toward Main Road, but is that all the way? I mean, obviously, there's already a lot of traffic on Souza Road, there are other developments and so forth. But complicating that further are two other factors that Karen Beck, the engineer, can, can comment on, and also Jeremy Lake. On the, on the Souza Road side, we're in a public highway there. We can't do anything to that right-of-way without DOT approval, which may be granted, may not be granted. You know, that, I think there was some indication here that that road and improvements on that had been the subject of the town's capital improvement requests to DOT. That was deferred, it's not clear, there was some discussion about a meeting happening with DOT about that. You know, certainly some contribution toward sidewalks at some reasonable level might make sense in front of our property line. We have a limited property line there on Souza Road, maybe 100 feet, and said maybe more or less, I mean, these would be sidewalks to nowhere. There are no sidewalks to connect to either on the east or the west or on Main Road. We would require DOT approval, maybe even more importantly, we would require DEM approval because the areas, at least on our property and others, that a sidewalk would be built on are, are either biological wetlands or in wetland setbacks, and we'd have to show that, that, that they're not, you know, that there, there's some compelling need for that. DEM would have to approve that, we'd have to go back to the drawing board with DEM. So those are genuine constraints to, to a sidewalk. The DOT approvals don't contemplate sidewalks there. Maybe DEM might want to do it, maybe this could be considered in phases as the project proceeds. It could be that, you know, and when the town and, and DOT re-initiate those discussions about the capital improvement program, you know, this, this, this is really a public works project that shouldn't be on, on, on any one property owner, but there's no objection to being a participant at some reasonable level to the extent that it's feasible at all in view of the wetlands constraints. And Karen Beck can comment on those constraints. Fish Road is a little different story. We still have the issue where the sidewalks would be sidewalks to nowhere, but more, we do think we have a solution that's right in the plan in front of us. We do know that in the past, the town has required some developers, including Mr. Harkins on, on a Boogamash Road project across from the library, to provide some type of sidewalk access on the property itself perpendicular to the road. And that was obviously a much more limited distance. In, in our plan, we have within five to 10 feet of the property line along Fish Road, an internal road that runs north to south within feet of Fish Road that would, that is already a redundancy to any sidewalks on, on, on Fish Road. And then a few, not far after that, there's another that runs north to south. So there are north-to-south internal passageways, good ones, built into this project to handle the impact of this project on concerns about traffic safety and walking north and south on, on Fish Road. And I don't know that anybody here actually appreciated that. I didn't. The plans have, there's all kinds of information on them that doesn't just jump, jump out, the engineering plans. So Karen Beck can explain just what's going on there in very, very close proximity to the property line to try to help a little bit with that issue. The only other thing is there was a, there was a requirement of a betterment fee that had to be paid in, to the town of Tiverton in connection with the sewer connections. And the way that I understand it works, and that it's worked on other projects that I've been involved here at Tiverton, is that the Tiverton wastewater district, which is not the town, it's a different governmental entity from the town, they have authority to tax and impose impact fees and connection fees and usage fees, and they do all of these, those things. They've recently changed their policy and increased what it costs to actually connect new properties to the sewer line. And it's a very significant per-dwelling fee that they collect because they're the ones that are, you know, that are introducing the sewer. In this case, we're going to be paying for all that infrastructure, but there still will be a fee obligation to the Tiverton wastewater district associated with those sewers. Now, that's not the town, so I don't think we should be paying another fee to the town. If, if there's some value being created because there are sewers there, that's something the tax assessor can take into consideration in how the, the property is, is assessed because it adds, if it's more valuable, then, then it may warrant a higher assessment than if there was no sewer there and there were just septic systems. Maybe, maybe not, but we want to avoid a redundant betterment fee that's one that we don't think the town imposes, because the town's got nothing to do with the, with the sewers, and there is a, a connection fee that's the equivalent of a betterment fee. And it's a lot, I can't remember what the exact number is, but it's a, it's a very, you know, it's a very significant amount, and it changes as they change their, their policies. So those are just the three things we wanted to, to, to get into a little bit.
And I just wanted to say that, that the list of conditions that appear in Ashley's memo are not, are not chipped in stone, they're very negotiable, and in fact, I've changed my mind on a couple of them. So we can, we can certainly have that discussion in a few minutes after we've heard from, I think, both, both the seismic, Mr. Michaud, and also any comments that Nathan may have on seismic, and then here from the school committee. And we can have a, a brief discussion a little later on about sidewalks, and I'll explain to you why I actually put, that was one of my contributions for, for conditions, and I can explain to you why I did it and, and what I have in mind, and I think maybe we can work something out to our mutual satisfaction. So, so if it's all right, can we now talk, hear from, from Mr. Michaud?
Yeah, I'd like to have him come up and introduce himself.
Right.
Describe his background and, and help us understand what the nature of the risk is here, the testing that was conducted, and what the nature of the risk here is with respect to the vibrations from Tiverton material.
Sure.
And since none of us are structural engineers, be, be, be very simple, but I, I actually read your report and I, I agreed with it, and.
Okay.
And felt it was.
It's a lot of data to go through, yeah.
The technical measurements you used were.
Yeah.
I haven't heard of Hertz's since I was in high school, I don't think, but.
Yeah, exactly. Well, thanks, everyone. My name's Andrew Michaud, I'm with Geyser Engineering, Division of Estebu Coal Engineering. So I came down, I work in our office in Riverside, Rhode Island, and we also have a location in New Hampshire, that's, so that's why I'm splitting my time. I've been in construction materials and geotechnical engineering field for about 23 years, and have done all kinds of data collection for geotechnical monitoring and, and various data collection in that industry for earth and construction practices. So I don't know where you guys want to start with it, but basically, we had our, we set up a seismic graph, we agreed with Chris to, let's pick a location on the site. I didn't have the site plans or anything at the time, so we said, let's find a good spot that is secure. We kind of went by middle of the property and chained it up for about 10 days from, it was September 26 through October 6. So my understanding is that there was two blasting events. We weren't actually there, the, it was recording while we weren't there. It appears, based on the data, there was likely an event on September 12. It appears, based on the data, there was likely an event on September 26th and also on October 6th, if I'm not mistaken, Chris, based on the information. So it collected some data on those days. It did detect vibrations from what was likely an event across the street at Tiverton Materials, blasting event. And the first page of our report, or I guess first appended page of our report is directly downloaded from the seismic graph that we used. And so when you're reading vibrations, it reads the peak particle velocity, which is basically the amplitude, how big of a vibration is it, and the speed or the frequency and rate in which that wave form travels. So what you have, I don't know if people have these or not, you have two types of charts. The top chart is the readings displayed in three different directions, longitudinal, transverse, and vertical. And it has the recorded events plotted on a chart, which also has the United States Bureau of Mines safe blasting levels plotted on there as well. And all the readings that we collected were significantly below safe blasting levels. The highest reading we received was .2 peak particle velocity. And your kind of safe blasting levels are in that 2.0 range for commercial structures. So we're about 10 times less than the detrimental blasting levels at this distance where our, where our equipment was installed and then at the time we recorded the data.
When you say 10 times the safe, what does that mean, safe blasting levels? Do I understand correctly that the graphs have a safe blasting level for the physical structures?
Structures, yeah.
And portions of those structures, including the foundation?
Yeah.
And then there's another one for the gypsum board?
Yeah, so on this chart, you have this stepped line that represents basically foundations and concrete, where there's a small hyphen line below it that represents gypsum. So it takes a little less effort to damage gypsum or drywall.
Or plaster.
Or plaster, yeah, yeah.
And so from your readings, where the little dots fall so far below, those, you're at point...
Point 2 is the highest, yeah.
But 2 is the, is the point, or I'm sorry, is it 5 that's the...
It's 2. Well, it's 2 at a high frequency, yeah.
At a high frequency.
Yeah.
So about 10 times this level of vibration is what it would take to introduce potential implications for a foundation and then even more of that for the gypsum board?
Less effort, yeah, less of that for the gypsum board, yeah.
Okay, and that's, now, in terms of, even when you do these safe blasting level tests, what's the standard in the industry for how far away from the blasting site the testing is even conducted that you did in this?
Yeah, sort of industry standard, like, for example, Rhode Island DOT, when they have construction activity going on, they will survey and do blast monitoring within a 200, 200 feet from the source of the vibration, whether that be blasting, pile driving, construction compaction equipment, that, those type of vibration collecting. So they're kind of in that 200-foot range, and they don't really assess much further beyond that.
Okay, and so are the locations that you picked, do I understand correctly, and I know we've got Mr. Lake here, that we're well over 200 feet from the blast site?
Yeah, I'd have to refer to him to figure out exactly where we are on the, on the property versus where the source of blast. And I don't even really know the exact location of the blasting activities over at Tiverton Materials, but it's significant. And one thing to keep in mind is the further away you get from a blast, the more it diminishes, the vibrations diminish. So I did bring a chart that kind of shows as you, as you move away in distance, here's your peak particle velocity, and as you move away in distance over here, the vibrations decrease significantly, just, just the nature of it. You know, it's kind of if you drop the pebble into a, into a pool of water, those ripples.
Right. So the question, there are two questions here. The first question is, is the blasting in any way a hazard to human health and safety? And the answer is absolutely not.
Right.
And that, of course, the blasting going on in the granite quarry across the street in Tiverton Materials is licensed by the state, and it does conform to state regulations and standards. And those standards are basically based on the U.S. Bureau of Mines standards. So it's not just Rhode Island, it's the federal government. So that's the first question. The second question, which is the really pertinent one, because I think everybody knows that we weren't going to have blasting that would, you know, cause people to die like they're doing in Ukraine. The real question is, what would be the wear and tear on new buildings built along Fish Road in the, on the sites that the applicant is proposing to build? What, six buildings, Chris?
Eight.
Or seven?
Whatever it is, yeah.
I think it's seven. But, so would there be long-term wear and tear that would perhaps cause some cracks, perhaps cause maybe window or door jams to go out of alignment after time? And I looked that up in the, just to sort of get a different perspective on what you had, Mr. Michaud. And there's a bulletin of the U.S. Bureau of Mines. It's actually mentioned in our zoning regulations, Bulletin 442, called Seismic Effects of Quarry Blasting. And they claim that at the levels that you have recorded, there would be virtually no negligible impact on the building itself. So, and then I realized that in our zoning, Article 8, Regulation of Industrial Operations, Section 3B, called Vibration, it states pretty clearly that Tiverton's standard is the same standard to be found in U.S. Bureau of Mines Bulletin 442, Seismic Effects of Quarry Blasting. So...
And I suspect they probably do their own monitoring as well.
But I do, I would like to say this, two things. You just mentioned that the farther away you get from the, from the, from the cause of the seismic vibration, the source, the less noticeable, the...
The less damaging, I would say.
And the less noticeable it is. It's, you know, it might be an annoyance.
Yeah, human can detect it.
But if you go further away, it, you know, it becomes less. That's one point I'd like to make. The second point is that, that Mr. Lawrence McCarthy, who is Vice President and Legal Counsel of the parent firm that owns Tiverton Materials, has been corresponding, and of course, Chris and Mr. Landry have that correspondence. And he has suggested that the building, that the buildings be removed 500 feet into the interior of Phase 1 of the project, away from Fish Road, probably for the same reason. Because, because there is still a little bit of concern in my mind that even though there's no damage to the building over time, and even though there's certainly no health risk to the public, still, people are a little bit annoyed when they feel that vibration. And that will cause complaints to come into Town Hall, as they have done, as they still apparently do. Now, we can deal with that with disclosure to make it very clear to anybody, any prospective purchaser, that, hey, you're right across the street from a quarry, and you may feel vibration from time to time. We can deal with it that way. Or, or we can encourage the applicant to think, can you take some of the building on Fish Road and move it back where you have recreational facilities in Phase 1 and pull those recreational facilities up onto, closer to the source of blasting and closer to Fish Road? That might be, that might be a possible solution that would work in everybody's favor. But maybe it's a little late to suggest the rearrangement of buildings on this, you know. I mean, we've been looking at this thing since 2018, and it's, and, you know, it's kind of, so what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
That it's not something you wish to do?
No, and it's, it's, you know, full, you know, new DEM, you know, this is...
It would raise too many issues.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I have to say, and I'm going to open this up to my colleagues on the planning board, and then I'll also ask the public if they have any comments, but I've come to the conclusion that the condition that I personally had recommended be dropped, that buildings, recommendation that the buildings be moved, be dropped. Because as long as we have fair disclosure to prospective buyers and they know what they're getting themselves into. Now, we all know that people will, you know, read that stuff in the literature, it'll go in one ear and out the other, and then when the blasting happens and the vibration happens, they'll still be angry, but that's human nature. And I don't see any, I don't know, I'm opening this up to my colleagues for their comments on this and then to the general public.
New plans?
Sorry?
New plans for us?
New plans.
New site plans? We haven't had any new site plans in quite a long time. We have the architectural plan.
So I'm not sure what you mean by new site, I mean, you've had the site plans now all along?
Last year, have they changed? All we're going by is this rendering.
Yeah, this little one.
No, they were, they're, yeah, it's been a year since we made the submission of full engineering plans that was submitted.
But things have changed.
They really haven't changed. We updated the landscape plan.
And you've moved that third parcel?
No, those are all part of this plan. That was the movement of the creation of more space in the middle of the project was required by DEM. The units were moved all around. We went through statistical analyses of how we weren't loading up units in any phase more than we had before. We've been at this for a year with these same plans. I don't know what gets distributed. We've had this discussion forward.
I haven't gotten any.
We filed 16 copies of all of these plans and then have backfilled that. I mean, that was in April of 2021 that those plans were filed.
I have March 18th, 2022 is the last, is the site plan date, and then an updated landscape plan, March 10th of 2022, and then site and architecture plans, April of 2022.
So site and architecture, those are the last revisions, the April, in April?
April 5th, 2022, that's the Union Studio set.
That's this.
Yeah. So the engineering set, if you want to...
All I was going to suggest is we weren't changing plans. We added additional diagrams to help clarify things like the bedroom distribution, the affordable unit distribution. So it was just additional diagrams on the plan.
There were no changes.
And we did, and we did request the applicant to bring us some slides to project behind me, which they did, to give us a better feel for what the, what the project will really look like from, you know, from a human perspective on the ground. But, but I do agree with Janice that the distribution of documents for a while there got to be a little haphazard. We didn't get some things, and, but we're working on it, and, but that's not the applicant's fault. The applicant delivered them to the office. The office just never went under the former management before better things began to happen. So, but does anybody else have any comments about blasting vibration? And does anybody have any suggestions about, is there, is there any kind of a condition that we can put on this that, that can be, that is scientifically valid? Because we can't just blow off the science and say, no, no, no.
I have a question and concern, and that is, and thank you, Mr. Michaud, for the explanation. However, I'd like to know, you said you chose a location on the site. All I have is a black and white copy of, where on the site is it on this? All I'm, all I'm using is the rendering. Is it close to these seven large structures? That's what I'm concerned with. And I have attended many, many council meetings about complaints coming in.
Sure.
Linda Avenue and, you know, that area.
I don't know if that proxy...
And I also worked and built the power plant and have felt the ability of vibrations.
Oh, yeah.
So the color version, I don't know if it's any clearer. The red dot is where he set up his, his equipment. This is Fish Road.
In relation to this rendering, where is it?
Right. So do you see this road coming out of the, the Tiverton?
I do see it. I know where it is, but where is it on this plan?
Oh, come on.
Thank you.
May I approach the bench?
Yes.
So...
I don't see the opening over here.
So that's this little cut here. So we have it set up kind of right back in here, so it's kind of amongst some of the units here more to the north. But again, they would all be similarly set back from Fish Road, similarly set back.
So we don't know, we don't know, nobody goes into Tiverton Materials, how far it is from...
Yeah, we don't know the exact location of the blasting events at Tiverton Materials.
They won't tell you any.
Right.
But it is, you know...
If you measure from that opening, it's kind of in a, in a clearing. If you measure from that clearing across the street to their property line, you're at 368 feet. If I go into 500 feet, I am still in the trees on their property. And if I go back into, like, where it's, again, we don't know exactly where they're blasting, but back into the property where it looks like there's activity, I'm at like 1,000 feet in some locations. In some places, I'm at 1,300, 1,500, 1,200. So at 500 feet from the location of that, where the seismic instrument was set, at 500 feet, I'm still in the trees on their property.
Just behind there, like, I don't know if that's a scale house or office building at that, yeah.
So Rick, did you have a comment?
Yes, please. Since you invited comments to...
Yes, I do.
Along the lines of what you said and to restate what DPW said at a prior meeting, I think it behooves the town to require a signed statement from every purchaser that follows the ownership forever, that a single sheet, along with whatever other sheets the developer, the seller wants to say, just like you do for a lead awareness sheet, it's a sheet that the person signs that says, I am aware that there is a existing quarrying operation, materials handling company that does blasting on the east side of Fish Road. And that will, A, make the person aware that that condition exists, and B, for the town to not receive as many phone calls that say blasting damaged by property. That could be correct or incorrect. They could be mistaken. That could be a valid complaint. We don't have to be the judge of that. The town greatly increases its chance of getting... The town greatly increases its chance of getting out of the loop of complaints where you're going to have 275 additional units, all in somewhat close proximity, not in the danger zone, not necessarily in an area where any detrimental effects will occur to any property. It's simply a proactive step so that the town does not get a lot of complaints or any complaints. The town can say, thank you for the call, however, you signed a sheet stating you're aware this operation exists. And as you had mentioned earlier, Stu, there's no shortage of people making what they consider legitimate comments but are not under town purview.
Right. And, and we actually, we actually have a condition for approval of the preliminary plan that would require that kind of disclosure. So that's, that's in Ashley's memo.
Not, not just, if I may say, Stu.
It was based on your, 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 your comments earlier.
Thank you. But I just wanted to clarify, not just a disclosure, but that people sign an individual sheet saying they do it, so that later on they said, well, I signed a 300-page document when I purchased the property and I didn't notice that.
Yeah, Ashley, we need to make that change for the condition, to the condition. That's a, that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
And that's not a.
That'll get the town off the hook a little bit.
Yes, and it's not an original idea. That's the reason there's a lead disclosure sheet that's by itself, even though they mention lead in various parts of any kind of purchase agreement. It's not an original idea, but it's a very good idea in DPW's opinion. Thank you.
So I'm going to weigh in on this just for a second. Initial purchasers from Mr. Harkins understood completely, we can require that. I don't know if we can require, we obviously can't require the developer for subsequent purchasers to sign some type of acknowledgement unless Mr. Landry has some idea about that.
Well, we don't have a problem with a signed sheet that someone acknowledges. I think we had suggested something.
For the initial purchaser.
Like that, but it could be recorded with.
That's my other point.
So that anybody that buys the property in their title, chain of title, you know, they're providing notice to you and your successors in interest that there is a quarry. So that's just as if someone's finding a mortgage on, on the, on the property and they're bound by it. And, I mean, this is all about the town being able to give credible, powerful information to someone as to why they don't have a complaint with, with the town or the developer for that matter. And, you know, we'd like that as much as you'd like that. So that, that's not a problem for us. Okay. So that would be like a deed restriction almost. It would run with a deed. But to the DPW director's point, those things get buried. There's probably four pages. We've got affordability restrictions, all kinds of things. And if we, if we make it like a lead disclosure, that it's a closing document that sits on a separate page, gets recorded with deed, makes reference to the deed restriction in the declaration, the homeowner's declaration, you know, it really is crystal clear.
But, but again, I don't want to mislead anyone. That's only to the initial purchaser. We have no control over subsequent purchasers and what they do.
Notice to subsequent purchasers.
No doubt.
They don't have to go find it in a file somewhere. It's, it'll be noted and as part of the title record.
Agreed.
And thank you for your consideration and thank you, Mr. Landry. And I'd like a note that DPW is not aware of any detrimental effects from the blasting operation that's occurred from Tiverton Materials. I'm not aware of any bad effects from that. I'm simply trying to be proactive to reduce complaints.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While, while members of the planning board are thinking of any comments they may have, I'll call on the public to see if anybody from the public has any, this is just blasting. We're just talking about the vibration and the blasting. And again, please make your comments very brief and very concise. And I see Ms. French coming forward.
Yes, please. Jamie French, I live on 81 Hobson Avenue, and I, I feel the blasting sometimes at my house. And my house will jump and I don't, I haven't felt it recently. And when it's hap, when it first happened, I didn't know what it was, so I was looking it up and to see if there were earthquakes. And one time there really was an earthquake and the other time there weren't. And I began asking people and they're like, oh, that's from the blast, that's from Tiverton Materials. But I, I haven't, I can't say that all, I don't know if all the blasts are equal, and I don't know if all of the blasting in different locations are what you feel. I do know that I, I live on the granite, on, on the ledge, and I live a couple of miles, two or three miles away. And I have previously lived in another town where I was also living on granite, and when they were doing construction and, and, and building an underpass deeper, it was the same type of feeling. It was, it would make my house jump and, and it was the same, the same feeling. And so I, I don't, I don't, and, and people have told me that they have had, that they have issues. They do have, they blame their foundation cracks on it and things like that. Not, it's not like major cracking, but that, that after a while, you know, you can feel this jumping feeling. But I have to say, I did not feel the ones recently, and they may not have been at home or maybe they just weren't significant enough for me to feel them, because it's not like I feel them all the time. You know what I mean? I, I probably feel them every couple of months.
Thank, thank you, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any comments from the general public? Seeing, seeing none, does any, does anybody, yes, do you have comments on the blasting?
It's just blasting, right?
This is just blasting. Does anybody on the board have any comments? If not, I would like to go on and hear Dr. Sanchioni.
Nathan, have any comments? I provided a memo, we provided a memo to the board, and we just went over the letter report, not really much project-specific stuff, but everything that they did, the equipment use is appropriate, the methodology was appropriate.
Thank you, Nathan. I do, I do have your memo, I just forgot to, to mention it. So you're giving us a go-ahead with this report? Okay, then I, then I think that if, if it's agreeable to the applicant, we can now sort of shift gears to, to the school busing issue and see if we, I think we can resolve that one. So Dr. Sanchioni, or do you have a representative that you'd like to bring up as well?
Yes.
And you can come, and you can stand at the, at the mic.
And this is Greg Neues from First Student Bus Company that we contract with.
Good. So we, just a, just a little bit of background information, we, we now have four separate independent estimates of the impact on school enrollment of this particular project. The first one came from the applicant and that showed about 78 students, if I recall correctly, Chris. Then we got one from Tischler Bice way back in 17, and they estimated 89 or something like that, in the eighties. Then we got one that was way high, just a couple of weeks ago. And, and now you've provided a fourth estimate, which is back in the range of the first two estimates. So that was like 70, a range of 75 to 100 schoolchildren. So my first question to you, Dr. Sanchioni, is can you handle that many kids in, in the existing? And by the way, that study broke down, and it was a rough estimate, as you pointed out, in art, not a science, but can, can you handle that many kids in the elementary school, in the middle school, and in the high school without building a new school?
So let's use 100 as a number to discuss if illustrative purposes, although I think that's a solid number, if not even a little bit on the low side. And certainly the distribution's going to determine what the schools can handle. We're going to predict, as a couple of the reports say to you, that most of these students are going to be situated at the elementary and the middle school levels. Most people don't move when their children are at the high school level. So at the middle school level, you know, we'll start there first because that's an easy one to say to you, yes, not a problem at all. That school has the size and the capacity to adopt another 50 students, no problem. At the elementary level, we have three elementary schools, they're small schools, they house about 200 students each. Size and capacity is at a premium. If you start putting more than 25 students at either one of those schools, we're going to fill all of our spaces and we're going to be forced to hire additional teachers, additional staff, and things of that nature. So that's just the reality of it that comes with, you know, if you add that many students to that level.
Okay, thank you. And, and then the second issue that came up, which I think is an issue that we, we do need to work a little bit more on, is can, can the kids be picked up both at the Souza Road access point, which is an access point into Phase Two of the proj, of the project, and that involves 146 units, and at the, and at one of the two access points off Fish Road into Phase One, which is slightly smaller than Phase Two? And can that be done safely and efficiently? And, you know, so we were trying to figure out how kids could get from home, because we know that the school buses will not go into the development. They will stop on the public, on a public road.
So we, we discussed that with First Student, and certainly, safety is the priority, right? And if you're going to ask students to stand on a very busy road, that's not the safest place to put them. Our buses and First Student is our, is our client, so to say, would go into a development if we thought that was the safest place to pick up students. So, and we believe that is the case, and we believe that if you, if you consider this development, a turnaround where a bus can get in there safely would be great, a cutout area where students could stand, with a canopy over it to protect them for the weather would be the most ideal situation for our students, the safest situation for our students. Jason, you want to add to that at all? Or Greg, I'm sorry?
No problem. It's like you said, I think that we should be able to pull into the development, because picking on Portham Road, I do not feel is a safe thing to do. And with just a few, the number of students too, getting off, especially for elementary, first and second grade, they need a parent there at pickup. And I'm concerned about releasing 30 children at once and trying to find 30 parents that are also standing on the side of the road, and if we are dropping off on the public road, we're going to be blocking traffic for, I mean, up to 10 minutes possibly.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, that can be, that could be a condition of preliminary plan approval, and then when you come back with your final plan, you would, you would, you would show on the plan some modifications right at the, at the entry points. Where, where land would be set aside for school buses, adequate land so that they could get in, they could pick kids up, they could drop kids off, and that they could turn around and get back out again without blocking people picking up their mail at the mail kiosk, for example. So, but that can be done because you seem to have, you have a fair amount of land, so you ought to be able to do that.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Actually, we discussed this at the last meeting, and I thought you were going to do some further investigation about, say, an apron or something that would allow.
Yeah, but so that wasn't a reality on the main road, you just can't, because it's, it's a state road.
So was there an internal space?
So internal, which is what we're hearing now, so it's, it's already there. You pull in and then that bus would be able to just turn around and right there on the right-hand side as you make that turn to go out the, the exit side. You just have a, you know, a dedicated place for the, you know.
Would you be able to get us a rendering of what that changed?
Yeah, and I think what's what the chair is suggesting is that final, we just reflect that on the plan.
They'll show on the site plans.
And just to be clear, I don't think we would need to necessarily make a lot of modifications. The site's already been designed for fire trucks and delivery trucks and everything else to come and go. So it's not like we have to create unique turnarounds for buses. We would, I think what we would want to do is just coordinate where is a sensible space for a bus stop. So we often try to put those at some of our community greens where there's a little bit of space.
And so the bus.
We could identify.
The bus, once it pulls into your, onto your site to pick kids up or to drop kids off, the bus is not blocking traffic coming in and out, nor is it interfering with people picking up their mail, for example.
Right.
That's fine. So, you know, but we would like to, we would probably like to see that on a, on a, on a plan.
For final, yeah.
Just for.
And just to clarify, we're only talking about the Souza Road entrance and not similar, or are we, on the Souza Road?
Thankful.
Okay.
Honestly, from a neighborhood perspective, it's more ideal if the buses are willing to come in.
Come into.
That's where the people are, right? So you don't have to have all the kids come all the way to the edge. You establish a few locations that make sense for everybody involved and, yeah.
That's great. So then you can reflect that in both entrances.
Sure.
Okay. I did have another question.
Sure.
For Dr. Sanchioni, regarding the, when you do your modeling for enrollment and looking five, 10 years out, my understanding is from RIDE and other agencies that generally overall Newport County is seeing a decline in school age enrollment. I don't know if that's true for Tiverton, but if so, what, what in terms of your modeling are you seeing if there is an overall decline? You know, how does that fit into the addition of these particular? And I'm looking at your finite specifics, because I think the distribution is more realistic in terms of what we could expect in high school, middle school, and elementary. But I'm just wondering if you have had a chance to look at that and see if that's in line with what your five-year-out model was already projecting, or if it's in addition to, or?
So although the East Bay may be seeing a decline in school age children, Tiverton is not, we're actually on an increase. Like to think that's because the schools are starting to show some significant growth in programming, and also it's a, it's a very desirable place to live. So we're up at 1,800 students right now. Our projections have us close to 1,900 in the next five years. I'd be happy to share that report. Matter of fact, we just received it this week, and it has projections up to 10 years out. This is, this development here, I'm not sure was included in the plans. I have to speak to the developer, the people who developed that report to find out if they did consider it.
That was one of the things that was unclear to me too, is that, you know, obviously it's not like this is going to be built tomorrow and 100 students are going to drop down from the skies. So over time, I mean, when you're looking at something like this, is there a model that exists to say, well, we expect of the proposed numbers from this development, that would be aggregate over five-year absorption or three years? Or is there some way to, to further look at what this study provided?
That would be partly dependent on if, is this a stage? I don't know enough about the development here. Is it staged? I certainly, so I'd have to know. So the phases would certainly determine that. So if I could get that information, we could run those numbers for you.
Thank you.
So does anybody else on the planning board have any questions for either Dr. Sanchioni or the gentleman from First Student Bus Company? Seeing none, I'll invite the audience to raise any questions that they may have. And I see Mr. Moniz is coming up.
Peter Moniz, Tiverton. Back to your question about phase N, five years or so, Phase One, you have to look at Phase One description of the units. Are the units multi-family, and I should say, multi-units, which is more than one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, units? That's where you're going to get the impact for children into the school system. If it's single homes, condos, whatever, that impact will be lessened. So that's where you got to look into. What type of units in Phase One is going to go in first? The number of children into those units. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to say anything on schools, busing? Yes, please step forward. I recognize you, I should remember your name, and I.
How you doing, sir? My name is Al Michael Sylvia, born and raised in Tiverton, graduated from Tiverton High School. I currently have a. I currently have a daughter in third grade in Tiverton as well at Pecasset. I guess my first question would be, where... So we're right on the line where we get to choose Fort Barton or Pecasset. Would these students be dedicated to just one school? Would they be distributed throughout the school systems in town?
That's a good question.
I guess my next question is, where are the teachers? I don't, you know, these teachers are maxed out. My kid right now, she's got about, I think, 22 kids in her class. It's a lot of children for anybody. And now you're talking about adding additional 25, whether it be kindergarten through fourth grade. We don't know that until, you know, obviously, people take residence in the home, stuff like that. So where does that fall into teachers and stuff? That's a lot to handle. It's a lot to handle right now. As the superintendent said before, it's a desirable place to live. So to think that, you know, there's going to be less than 100 kids, a little more, we don't know that. We're kind of thinking on the higher side because people want to come here, you know? So I guess my biggest concern is the residents of Tiverton, how will their children be impacted in the school systems by bringing additional families in at such a large scale? Obviously, the project comes in phases, graphs, they go out through about five years. They're only going higher. You even mentioned 1,600 to, I think, 1,900 if that was the number. You might as well times that by two, maybe three. Everybody wants to come. It's a nice place to live. Same thing on the island, falling short over there as well. Numbers vary from town, so on and so forth, as far as, you know, how many kids are in the school system, whatnot. I can't go back as far as, you know, fourth, third grade, second grade. I don't really remember, you know, how many kids we had in the class. But it's a major concern with the impact of where the kids are going to end up, how they'll be distributed. Do the schools know that they're getting X amount of kids? And do the teachers have an opinion or a say or anything like that in that matter? You know, there's a lot to come with that, and not to mention too, will these children need additional services, IEP, special needs, so on and so forth? Will we need to hire more of those teachers as well? It's not just cut and dry with a single child. Every child is different. Every child learns different, progresses different, you know? And that's a lot to take on our school system. I guess my next question would be as far as the busing. With such a large project, I do projects, we work around the Boston area. Usually when we do these projects, they come in and there's a place established for the children. We dropped off, picked up a canopy, whether it be a meeting spot, so on and so forth. I just don't, before, when you guys asked the developer, you know, if there was anything they had in mind and whatnot, and you said that was absolutely not possible. So are we not thinking about the children that are already going to come to our school? We're just thinking about the sale of the condo or the property, whatever it may be? Doesn't sound like a lot of thought process went into that as well. I guess my last question and concern is how busy that road is with large trucks coming in and out? Highways right there, so obviously, coming to and from Tiverton Materials, the gas across the street as well. You know, things to take into consideration too. Will there be a stoplight or anything, a stop sign, a crosswalk, caution?
We've discussed that at great length and studied it at great length. But the comments that you make about the school system are very excellent comments, and I'd like to ask Dr. Sancioni to respond. I'm curious about whether all of the elementary kids in both phases will go to the same elementary school? And if so, which school?
So superintendent's nightmare is a word called redistricting. And so if you look at our elementary schools now, we have three of them. And for illustrative purposes, at each grade level, we have two teachers. So let's say fourth grade, we have two fourth grade teachers at Ranger, two fourth grade teachers at Pecasset, two fourth grade teachers at Fort Barton. Every year, we look at the number of students in fourth grade, and we try to balance that so that the schools are equal. So if this development is closest to Pecasset, ideally in our district right now, it would be districted to Pecasset. But if we start overflowing Pecasset, we're going to redistrict these kids to Fort Barton and/or to Ranger. That's where we work with our bus company to get them there so that we can balance the class sizes amongst all of them. Now, to the gentleman's point, you know, we cap class size at 25. So once we get above 25, we're adding that seventh teacher. And so I'm less concerned about adding the teacher, I'm more concerned about the space to add that teacher. Right now, we have two available classrooms out of all three elementary schools. So that helps.
So what elementary school will the kids in Pecasset Reserve go to?
Well, it's in the Pecasset District. But I can say to you right now, if there's 50 elementary students going there, we're going to take those students and disperse them. That's the only way we can, we're not going to overflow those classes.
Sorry, I didn't understand that, thank you. Any other questions about, questions or comments about school enrollment or busing? Schoolchildren?
I'll just make a comment that I think these are all, you know, good comments, and it's important to get this all, you know, out for people's questions to get answered. But this is going to be phased over, how many years?
Decade, I would say.
Okay, so you're looking at a school enrollment phased over...
Ten years.
Ten years, potentially 10 years. We also need to remember that not every child that comes out of this development is new to Tiverton. There will be a percentage of children that will already be in the Tiverton School District. So I just don't want everyone to think that this is an influx of 100 kids in two years. This is an influx of, I don't know, I mean, it's anybody's guess, 50 to 75 kids over 10 years.
And a fair amount of over 55 folks who are going to live here, that these numbers are anyone's speculation.
And they are speculative numbers. It's everyone's best estimate as to how many children, how many of those kids will already live here? How many will be new students? How many will move in in the first phase, second phase, third phase? I just want to make sure that we're keeping those things in mind as we're having this discussion.
Yeah, and additionally, not every parent will choose to send their kids to a public school.
They may go to a private school.
They may homeschool, they may go to a private school. There are lots of factors that come into that.
If I may, Mr. Hardy, this issue comes up on almost every comp plan that involves a significant number of units. And the way that it's dealt with in other municipalities is for us to provide as much information as we can to help the town plan for the project, the phasing, the bedroom count, and so forth. There's nothing in the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act that makes school enrollment or fiscal impacts a standard for approval or denial or anything else, quite the opposite. There was a 300-unit project that went forward for another client, about 300 units, about approximately the same size. And Andrew Tights, who represents a lot of municipalities, very well-regarded, the first thing he told everybody there on the planning board is you can't penalize the applicant based on school enrollments or fiscal. It's not in the act. And the goal of the act is for every municipality to get to 10%. The need is for family housing. It's in the comprehensive plan that multifamily housing be in this area at the densities that we propose. Remind you that the 305-unit density that we started with five years ago, that was the base density for that zone for multifamily housing based on a combination by half and half, two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units. Since then, we've reduced it to 275, and the proportion is 60% two-bedroom units, 40% three-bedroom units. So those estimates of 70 children, you know, five years ago, that was based on 305 units. This is a lot less than that. But to Ashley's point, it gives the town a basis for planning. There may be additional teachers associated with this. There are 275 new taxpayers. It's a big-picture-type issue, but this is the way the town wanted to grow and where it wanted to grow under the comprehensive plan that was applicable to this project. So I, you know, I just want to put the whole fiscal and school enrollment thing in some kind of a perspective. When master plan was granted for this project, those studies were all available. The numbers haven't changed at all. And the master plan reduced the number from 305 to 275 based on whatever the board felt should justify that decrease. But none of this is new information, and it is a vested project at the 275 level.
Thank you. And so now I would like to, thank you, Dr. Sancioni, that was very good. I'd like to close the public hearing, and I'd like to move on now to a discussion.
Stu, you said you're going to have an open public meeting after the superintendent. I've got a question for something about...
I've been asking for questions from the public on school enrollment and since sidewalks are pertinent to schoolchildren, I will allow you to say...
Stu, let's not fool around. You said at the beginning, you changed the schedule around already. You said they were going to talk, and then you're going to go back to the public. You broke it down to public segments already. So I've been waiting for the, go back to the beginning about sidewalks itself.
You have your opportunity now, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. Sidewalks to nowhere, does that make sense? Sidewalks, basically, they all go nowhere. They're there for a purpose, a safety purpose. Just a little while ago, it was mentioned 275 units. That doesn't mean only 275 people are going to move into this complex. It might mean 275 plus if they're married, living together, and children. It should be over, well, I would say 325 people at least, no problem at all. Those people have to walk around. I'm concerned about children, basically, though. Now sidewalks are very important. They may not go nowhere, but they go to the purpose of saving lives for traffic. Already, they've been mentioned here by the applicant representative that Souza Road is very busy. And you need a way to save lives and move people around in that area. Now, the comp plan, you're going to degrade the comp plan? I just read the comp plan today, looking up some other matters. We got into Rhode Island DOT. In the comp plan, it's required that there be sidewalks. You're going to degrade that situation? I hope not. So, and the DOT, it's a state road, correct? They're going to be working on that road, down the road pretty soon, we hope, because I was looking at the DOT plans for the tip, and they mentioned Souza Road. But I can give you a good example of the DOT not running up there and putting sidewalks in. The opportunity is now, when the developer goes into that project and on that road. The example is like in Portsmouth. Sprague Street, which I'm very familiar with, there's a high school off that road. 50 years ago, they were looking for a sidewalk. It hasn't come in yet, maybe another three or four years before it goes in. If you do not get these sidewalks now, you're in a big trouble getting them down the road. The developer will be gone, and the state will be dragging their feet. And, well, I can give another example locally. The one on Bogomash Road, two phases, which they haven't completed the second phase. That sidewalk on Bogomash Road should have gone in at that time because that safety hazard is still there. Why? Because they haven't dragged their feet on this Phase Two. A lot of kids go across the Bogomash Game Park, Skate Park, the housing back there, Sandy Woods, very dangerous. If you do not face the fact that you need a sidewalk there, you're just putting those kids in jeopardy. You've got to consider the welfare and safety of this town.
Thank you, Mr. Moniz. And if I cut anybody else off, I apologize. But I would like to respond a little bit to what Mr. Moniz has just said and what Mr. Landry said earlier. I was going to delay this until we got to our discussion of conditions, but since the issue has come up now twice, we take sidewalks very seriously in our current comprehensive community plan. I'm looking at it right now, and we have a whole section on sidewalk systems. And there are several action items in our comp plan that call for what the state calls a complete street policy. The state defines complete streets as streets that are designed not just for motor vehicles but for pedestrians, bicycles, even wheelchairs, and encourages towns to build sidewalks where sidewalks are needed. And I'd just like to read one of, maybe there are two or three action items, but I'll just read one. And this happens to be an action item in the chapter in our comprehensive plan called circulation. And it's action item two, and it says, "Develop a complete streets plan. Maintain and install sidewalks in high-priority areas defined as those areas within schools, on major roads, within commercial districts, and in other areas where pedestrian activity is to be encouraged." I do take exception to the comment that I have heard from a number of people, sidewalks to nowhere. We have to start somewhere. And those sidewalks that may not connect to a whole sidewalk system when they're first built will eventually be linked up as more and more developments come in. And I can't think of a single area in the town of Tiverton that needs sidewalks more than the area that we're talking about tonight because we have so many other developments in that immediate neighborhood, including Bayview condominiums, including Souza Road condominiums, including the condominiums that have just now been built in the final phase at Star Woods, the villages at Mount Hope Bay. Something will eventually go on to the 44 acres that Mr. McGinnis owns right across from the development that we're talking about tonight. And the development that we're talking about tonight will have a lot of kids, maybe not 100. Those kids are going to need sidewalks, and there are a lot of people my age who walk every day for heart health. More and more people are walking. We all know that. It's something that we should encourage, and we've got to start somewhere. And if we don't start with the developers, we'll never get the sidewalks built because the town of Tiverton doesn't have the money, and the state is always a day late and a dollar short. So I really feel strongly, Tiverton Materials has suggested, has called attention to the bad condition on Fish Road and the dangerous conditions for pedestrians on Fish Road. And I know that to be a fact because people are going 45, 50 miles an hour on Fish Road, and it's very narrow, and there aren't shoulders. And so Lawrence McCarthy has called on us in a letter to please insist on a sidewalk on Fish Road. And then the gentleman, the traffic engineer who did the peer review of the traffic study that Todd Brayton did for the applicant also recommended a sidewalk stretching from the access point on Souza Road to Phase Two down to Main Road. It would be unfair to ask the developer to come all the way down to Main Road because there is a portion there that is owned by Colby Enterprises, not the applicant. So we wouldn't ask the applicant to do that. But I feel very strongly, and I hope my colleagues will join me in this, that we need to... Now, if there are issues with DEM, perhaps we could move the sidewalks onto your property and off-public property. There are options that we can pursue. And I'm hoping that we insist on this because I feel very strongly that sidewalks are an important part of what we're trying to accomplish in Tiverton. We are trying to develop our town, and we know it will be developed, based on smart-growth principles. And one of the key tenants of smart-growth is walkability. And getting people out of their... out of their cars and onto their feet. And certainly that neighborhood is gonna see a huge amount of development in the next 10, 15, 20 years. And it will look very different. And it will be so much nicer. I think Oxford Development Group would love to have sidewalks because they've got the kind of development that's gonna, that's gonna encourage that kind of pedestrian friendly behavior. So that's all I have to say right now on that. And, and by the way, we'll, in a minute now, we'll be discussing conditions. And, and again, I, I don't think the planning board wants to shove anything down anybody's throat with respect to conditions. So we're negotiable.
Yeah.
But I'm just expressing my strong views on this.
Thank you, thank you for that. And, and I think that, from our perspective, we, we as well care deeply about walkability and about neighborhood community design, which is what the whole principle of this project is. I mean, there is, I'm probably gonna spit out a bad number, but probably over 3,000 linear feet or probably more like 5,000 linear feet of sidewalks already developed into this project.
But those are interior.
If, exactly, right. So, but you also, what you're not recognizing that is, all the way along Fish Road, on the roadside, there's a sidewalk that goes all the way along, mandering around. And then on the other side of the, of the nine-unit buildings, there's another sidewalk on the roadside. So there is the sidewalk that you're talking about all the way along Fish Road or along our entire frontage that front the buildings.
Where? I don't see it.
That's what I asked.
Oh, this is something you're planning to build?
Yeah, I can, I can describe where it is.
It's five feet away from the property line. That's why we wanted Mr. Lake to discuss the redundancy that a sidewalk on Fish Road would create. And Ms. Beck to describe the wetlands limitations on Souza Road. But, but before they do.
But this is a sidewalk and not a motor vehicle access?
No, this, that's what it is. It's a sidewalk. It's a sidewalk on our property already.
Is this here, I think?
Five to 10 feet off the property line, north and south on, on Fish Road. Mr. McCarthy may not have walked, seen it.
So, can I clear?
This is old news to me.
Let me clarify a few things.
But, but I've often said that I can't read these plans.
Yeah. Let me clarify a few things. It, it is difficult on the civil plans. They're in there, but there's also grading lines, there's stormwater lines, there's a lot of lines. You really gotta almost know what you're looking for. So I get it, which is why we, why we produced.
Is that why we got this?
The rendered versions as well. I don't know. But I can describe it while they're even trying to pull it up, which is simply all of those buildings along Fish Road. Those buildings have a, what we'll call a front door facing Fish Road and a back door that accesses the parking areas.
Right.
We have a sidewalk on both sides of those buildings. So for every one of those buildings along Fish Road, at the very northern end where the buildings are only about 20 feet back from Fish Road, we have a, a front sidewalk that's just inside of the property line off of the right-of-way. It runs down across our entry road, again, in front of the buildings that are on Fish Road. As the buildings begin to peel back off of Fish Road, the sidewalk follows the buildings. So the dimension between the road and the sidewalk varies as you make your way down. But again, at its most, it's probably 50 feet back from the road itself. It's very much in front of the buildings and would be basically publicly accessible. It's not a public sidewalk, but it is a sidewalk within the project that is visible and accessible. And that would run all the way down to the southern end.
Right.
Make its way back out to Fish Road. So what we're saying is.
Now, would that go north all the way up to your property line?
It, it starts at the northernmost building, doesn't necessarily go the last 30 feet to the property line.
Okay, I'd, I'd like it to go to the property line. But no, you, you've just solved my issue with respect to Fish Road. That is entirely acceptable to me. I think it would probably be acceptable. But let's see what's on the.
Yeah, so, so if you wanna, yeah, there's, if you go forward a page or two or three or five, whenever we get into the zoomed up versions.
Can anybody read that?
Well, no, you'd have to.
You can't see, you can't see the sidewalk on there?
Scroll on.
If, if you just, here, actually, let me, let me click.
Okay, show us where Fish Road is. Is this Fish Road?
No, it's okay.
This is Fish.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna flip through some pages. So here's the northern end, Fish Road. And this file, so pisses every computer off. Sorry.
Well, Larry, you've seen it.
There it is. Oh, sorry. More clicking, I'll stop. Okay, so if you see the building there to the north, I have a cursor. This is our northernmost building. Here's our front door. We have, see, this is where we started a sidewalk. To your question, Stu, there's probably another, let's call it 60 feet to our property line where we don't have the sidewalk currently. We wanted to make sure our buildings were connected. So we come down here, sidewalk connects to the front of this building, crosses over, crosses over, still here. So in, in all these conditions, we're about maybe five feet behind the property line, 10 feet behind the property line.
Okay.
Because that's what we can control. Let me go a little bit further south. So here you can begin to see as the buildings begin to pull back, we also pulled the sidewalk back. Again, because, you know, 99% of its use is gonna be the folks that are in these buildings. So, but anybody along Fish Road could certainly be walking along the sidewalk as well. As you get to the southern end of where we have the buildings proposed, we turn out, we have one more access point to the parking lot down here. So at this last point down here, the walk comes and it basically, we return it back out to Fish Road. So conceivably someone, if they were walking down the street from somewhere else, could connect in at that point. So again, we don't have it extending all the way to our southern boundary. There's also, you know, there's grading considerations, a bunch of other things that actually make it kinda difficult down at this end. We certainly made sure to connect all of our front doors to one another along Fish Road. So I would argue for the majority of the Fish Road frontage, we have an option that folks could utilize.
No, I, 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 I would personally accept that. But, but, but I would like to see more of it. What you have is fine.
Okay. And then I can try to just quickly summarize the Souza Road issue, even though I'm not an engineer. Karen could certainly come up and speak more to it as well. So just give me a minute to get to the page that shows that corner of the site. I think it's one more. Almost there. Actually, let me see if this gets us there. So the, the challenge we have on the Souza Road frontage again is the majority of our frontage is wetlands or wetland setback. There's a reason why our development stops where our development stops. You see that heavy black line? That is the wetland perimeter. That's the offset. So our entry was basically determined by where, that's the furthest we could go before we were into areas we weren't allowed to go. So our road comes out at this point, a little bit difficult to make out. You see that gray line? We have a sidewalk that does bring you all the way again to the edge of development because that's as, as best we can do within our property. Technically, there's probably what, this is maybe 100 and 150 feet to our property line. But you can see some of this is gonna be landscape areas, some of this is stormwater sort of area. Again, so there's potentially a little bit of frontage here we could talk about. Anywhere from here east is all in the wetlands.
Yeah.
So that's why we were suggesting it's very, certainly we couldn't make that determination via conversation with DEM, potentially with DOT. Again, there is a public right-of-way that's not entirely road, but it's a lot road because I think it's only like a 40-foot right-of-way. So there's not a lot of dimension. Other issues like grades, sightlines, the lack of curbs, you know, there's, there's a lot of, it's a complicated issue. So we thought we did the best we could to certainly deliver you to the public rights of ways. Without public rights of ways could be improved and we're close in a lot of locations, but we connected what we thought was sensible and logical because of what we're proposing, where, where the units would be.
Right.
And we'd be happy to connect to that budding property that I understand that there's a project of.
The Oxford project.
What is that? It's a multi-use.
The Souza condominiums that you're.
So, I mean, we would, we'd be happy to connect that, our, our development to that development that would then get you to, to Main Road. So that, whatever that piece is, connect to their property. I mean, we would be happy to do that.
It, it, that land is, the, the land east is wet. I understand that.
Yeah.
But the land to the west is pretty dry.
To, to.
And you could, you could do, you could do a sidewalk down to where your property ends and the, and the Colbea property begins.
Yes, we'd have.
So we wouldn't get all the way to Main Road. And that would be a sidewalk to nowhere in a sense, but sooner or later, we're gonna require whoever develops on that immediate corner to continue the sidewalk down to, to, to Main Road.
So, so our property line, you can see there's.
We're just trying to do this in phases.
Yeah. So our property line's right there. So we could do another 100 and, we could do that first 150 feet. The question would then be when we're talking about the next project in two weeks, I guess you would be asking them a similar thing, pick up the line, the sidewalk from there and now hit down to.
They don't own that land.
Oxford does.
Oxford, Souza Road Condom.
Souza Road Condominiums is that next parcel. Mr. Harkins doesn't own past that line, which is only 100 feet from our entry.
They're next because their drive goes into that.
Oh, yes. Oh, no, you're, you're absolutely correct.
It wraps around.
As, as, as you come west on Souza Road, your property line ends and then Oxford Development would pick up.
And they get almost to the corner, but not quite.
And then they get almost to the corner, but then they run into Colbea. Yes, I'm sorry. Absolutely correct. And in two weeks, we'll be having, we'll be having that conversation with Mr. Landry in two weeks.
Well, and then Mr. McGinnis is across the street. I mean, you know, the property, if we're doing all this between two developers, and you talked about five different projects, some of them haven't even come here yet, you know, it wouldn't be unreasonable for somebody to be filling, you know, filling gaps or making a contribution toward whatever else needs to be done to connect all of these.
Well, that's, that's exactly what.
And that makes sense. You know, we, we, we believe in sidewalks, gonna make a good neighborhood. But for one applicant to be going all the way from Fish Road to, to Main Road and then building a redundant sidewalk to one that's 10 feet away on the other side.
I've given up on that.
I understand. Just needed to get those facts out.
Don't, don't beat a dead horse here.
Jeremy, can you just clarify one other thing? So that the internal sidewalk from the entrance back, does that butt right to the street edge or is there a, a space between the roadway and then the sidewalk?
There's a green strip between the curb and the sidewalk.
I thought so, but I couldn't.
Yeah, yes.
And do you know about what the setback about is?
I think it ended up in the like three to four foot range. We started at like five to six, but I think as we were trying to be careful about wetland lines, grading lines, a bunch of things.
But then that continues to all of your internal sidewalks.
So internally, we have sidewalks all over the place, which is what I was referring to before. So, so we, we don't disagree. It gets, it gets hard when you get up to the edge. We don't control the right-of-way. We don't control land on either side of us.
Right.
So we try to deliver out to the folks that maybe the state would improve Souza Road, do a complete streets program, include sidewalks, you know. It's, it's a state right-of-way. It's not our, our, right?
Right. No, I, 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 I think we, I think a resolution has presented itself. So, so thank you. I am closing the public hearing.
Stu, can I just say?
No, you may, you may not.
That's not public then.
I am, I am closing the public hearing. You've had your say.
No, I didn't because now you're, sir, you're not letting me talk though.
You have had your say.
Stu, you've talked several times. I only talked once.
We have had a nice discussion on sidewalks. I think we've resolved that issue.
You haven't resolved it in my mind.
I've supported your comments on sidewalks.
There's a right-of-way on Souza Road from the development to Fish. That sidewalk can be waived if it's gonna go on wetlands and they can do a switch. They can share, transfer of wetlands for about a foot. You can add more wetlands if you cover a, a wetland. That's an excuse, I'm not putting a sidewalk. But there's another plan. If they're gonna develop McGinnis' property, put a condition that they will get together with other developers and maybe put it on the other side where there's might be more land and they're not wet even. But there's no excuse for not putting a sidewalk from the developer, development to Fish Road because there's a right-of-way there, state-owned. And on Bogomash Road, this board, when I was on it, we got a sidewalk on a state road that was required in front of the library. On the other side, we wanted another one too. But it was failed because it wasn't followed through. There is an opportunity for a sidewalk on Souza to Fish.
Uh, thank you. Okay. Now I'd like to close the public hearing.
Check with Mr. Landry.
If that's agreeable to you.
That, that's fine.
Then we will go.
One other thing to say, two seconds, just to.
Sure.
Have it clarified. The comprehensive plan that we were vested on was the one in place in 2016. I'm not saying sidewalks are not a good idea, but the whole idea of complete roads and all that, I believe, is in the more recent version of the, of the comprehensive plan that may be applicable to other projects. But we, we had master plan approval and was certified complete before the new comprehensive plan. So I think they just wanna put that out there because that may not have been identified.
Thank you. And so now, if we could have the lights back on and kill this, I'd like to go on to a very brief discussion between the board and the applicant on conditions because I think we're very, very close. And Ashley has provided everyone with a memo. And her memo dated October 26 has a list of conditions. They're draft conditions. And so I'd just like to go through these quickly and ask my colleagues on the planning board if they agree that these are good conditions and also ask the developer if, or the applicant if they also accept these conditions. So the first conditions, and this is on page four of the memo.
Just, I have been editing as we've been talking.
Yes.
So some of these I have amended.
Good.
As we've been going. So when you get to one, I can let you know that I've tweaked the language.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's good because we, we have been, so, so I'd like to start out with the conditions carried over from master plan, but not yet satisfied. And I came up with three of them. Provide an infrastructure plan showing all infrastructure and the phasing of the infrastructure as, as construction occurs. That was a condition up for the master plan that you accepted back then. You may have done that already. It may be on the plans, but it's just something that it's, you know, that it's hard to, it's hard to call out and because, because the plans are so busy. The second bullet there is all low and moderate income unit shall be integrated throughout the entire development within each construction phase and be compatible in scale and architectural style to the market rate units. LMI units must be built and occupied prior to or simultaneously with the construction and occupancy of market rate units. I know you agree to that.
Agreed.
But I think that what we were trying to do is show where each of those units is. And maybe you're doing that on the plan, but I know that Jeremy said he could do that.
We did. So one of the, April, I guess it was dated submission that we resubmitted, there is, there is a page dedicated to that issue. It's a color-coded page that shows the distribution.
Is it in the, the design?
It shows the distribution, but not the, not the placement. I mean, I'm looking at this because the building official, when they issue the permits.
Yeah.
We want.
Right. So we, so you see the little colors on all the footprints all around the plan?
Yes.
So if it's colored, it's an affordable unit. The, the ones that aren't colored are the non-affordable. And the point was, you can see they are distributed throughout. There is no putting in a particular corner. Yet it, it, what it's trying to illustrate is the principle of equally distributed, both location-wise, but also by type. We've done the 25% by type. And certainly, we know that when we go to pull those building permits, we have to prove that, let's say we're, we're pulling a permit for another 20 units.
You do.
We'll show you which five are affordable.
Because that's, that's state law. So.
That's state law. And you, in other words, these things will adjust a little bit as those.
What you've done already, Jeremy, is, to me, is acceptable because you've made a good faith effort to show the distribution. When you get into construction, you may run into ledge, you may have to make modifications, and there may be some slight changes. So we can't expect you to tell us everything now. But what you've done is adequate, keeping in mind that you have to prove this to the state. And then the third item there is provide a letter from the monitoring agency accepting responsibility for monitoring the LMI units. And that also is part of state law, I believe, and you're gonna have to do that anyhow. So, right, Mr. Landry, you know more about this than anybody else does. So is that all agreeable to you? Is that all agreeable to all of us? We think that that's, those are good conditions? Okay. So vehicle and pedestrian related is the next category. And here we said, interior sidewalks shall be concrete, not asphalt. I kind of feel that's an important issue. My colleagues may, may say, no, asphalt. My colleagues may, may say, no, asphalt is good, but you know, asphalt doesn't stand up the way concrete stands up. And it's, it has a much nicer look and it would fit so much nicer with the wonderful designs that Jeremy Lake is giving us for, for the houses. I know it adds additional cost, but I, I just feel like it's, it's something that would make the project so much nicer and so, and, and more marketable. I mean, I, I just, I just think that asphalt sidewalks are not very durable. The roots will push them up and, um, so enough said there. Let me just go through the rest of these and then we can discuss this whole category of conditions all at one time. The second condition under that, under the category of, um, vehicle and pedestrian related conditions is the plan shall show what portion of the alleyways is pervious pavement and what portion impervious. Maybe you've already done that. I know we talked about that and you thought it was okay. I think we talked about that with Tom Principi and he said he, he had that. You haven't gotten that yet?
No, there, as far as I understand, there is no pervious. We, we handle all surface and stormwater through, you know, the stormwater system into detention basins, so.
Basically, there is no pervious pavement.
Correct.
There's a, a gravel access road, but that's just between the two phases.
Okay.
None of the alleys are pervious pavement.
Okay, then I would, and you have your Ripton's permit and this town can't second guess your Ripton's permit. Therefore, that issue I think is closed and I would, I would eliminate that condition. It is, I don't know, I don't even remember where it came from. I, I think it came from something that was said at the, at the ad hoc technical review committee. Okay, the third bullet there is add a concrete sidewalk. Well, we've talked about that. Um, I think, I, I think there, what you're, what you're showing, what Jeremy has shown us along Fish Road is fine. I'd just like to extend it up to, um, to the north end of your property line on Fish Road, up toward Linda Avenue or Linda, whatever it's called. You know what I'm talking about? Just continue it up there so that hopefully some other people will build a, you know, we can get somebody else to build a sidewalk.
It will be concrete on your property?
Our interiors, um, we intended to use some of the, some of those ones that are perimeter, you know, that was still, you know, on the fence and how we're going to do it, on our, our main streetscapes.
So, so if you would do that and if you would, um, build a sidewalk on Souza Road, um, beginning at the access point into Phase Two, heading west toward Main Road, down to your property line, which abuts the Oxford Development Group. Property line. If you agree to that, that makes me a very happy camper because I think we've got a lot of, we, we've made, um, a lot of progress here on sidewalks.
So in place of the, and next time I'll number these so we can easily reference them. In place of the condition that's written now that says add a concrete sidewalk from Souza Road, strike that and include the applicant will extend the walkway along Fish Road north to the property line. The applicant will provide a walkway slash sidewalk west to the property line on Souza Road from their site entrance.
Yes, that, that's correct, but, but, but the condition should also mention asphalt, should mention concrete rather than, the, the building materials should be mentioned. Just, just to be, just to be strict here. Since, since the applicant is in such a good mood right now, we should get them to make as many concessions as we can. Okay, the next one is show the location of mailbox kiosk with say pedestrian access. That's a no brainer. You've already agreed to do that. That's not a problem. And, um.
Stu, I think you skipped the landscape.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Landscape plan shall incorporate the Bryant Associates recommendation of, to, of cutting vegetation near the access, Egress, uh, road to improve site distance. And you were, we have, we have Todd here. He, he remembers what, what the peer reviewer, I think from the peer reviewer that we hired to take a look at Todd's work and he recommended some work on vegetation to improve site. That's a no brainer. That's a no brainer.
There's a note on the landscape plan referencing that in specific.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, then we can either drop it from the conditions or keep it as a condition, but it's already been satisfied. Okay. Uh, thank you for catching that, Peter. And, um, and then the final one is the Tiverton School Department recommendation. And, and here, we've already got a plan. What, what you're going to do, the final plan is you're going to show where school buses can come in onto your property, where they will have room to be out of the line of traffic and pick up kids and drop off kids safely and then turn around easily and get out again. That's all we're looking for. And that's, and that solves that issue altogether.
The amended condition would be that the applicant will provide adequate provisions to have a school bus enter the site off of Fish Road and Souza Road to pick up and drop off children within the development.
Yeah, perfect. Good. Excellent. So does anybody have any, uh, around the table here, or the applicant for that matter, any comments on these, on these conditions? Does everybody think that they're good conditions? They, okay. Then let's go on to the, the disclosure related conditions. And here we do have a little bit of a modification.
Yep.
So a written disclosure must be made to potential buyers that the condominium association, not the town, is responsible for maintenance of the roads, sidewalks, streetlights, snow plowing, trash pickup, detention basins and stormwater management structures, water and sewer pipes and pumps, recreational facilities and common land as per DPW Director Rogers' suggestion. That I think can stay the same. And however you'd like to do that.
That does.
It is, is.
Excuse me. Is this a condominium association, a homeowner's association?
A condominium.
It'll be a condominium declaration. Okay, I just want to make sure we had a proper term there. Thank you.
So.
The second one I've amended.
So the second one would now be amended based on Rick Rogers' comments to talk about a separate piece of paper that people sign to raise the profile of the issue a little bit.
So, uh, written disclosure as a separate sheet signed by the initial purchaser must be made to buyers that an active quarry with possible vibrations from blasting is located at eight, 10 Fish Road. The presence of permitted blasting at an active quarry site adjacent to the development shall be noted in the deeds.
And shall be recorded. The statement two shall be recorded. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good. Anything else on disclosure issues? Those are the only two I could think of. Okay, so circulation related to seismic vibration. I, um, I'm going to withdraw what I have, what I, um, have written here. I, I just don't think we have a legal leg to stand on to, to, to make that at this point. And so, does everybody kind of agree that based on what we have written in our own zoning ordinance? I mean, if we were ever taken to the State Housing Appeals Board on, on this issue, we'd, I wouldn't want to have to defend it. And we have two experts, not just the applicant's expert, but our very own expert who's, who agrees that the seismic is not going to be a problem for the buildings. So just get rid of that altogether.
Just to be clear, Nathan only agreed that the testing was appropriate, the equipment was appropriate, right?
Yeah, I didn't really have project specific information for this one, for this one.
Right.
Yeah.
So they, he, they looked at the report on super short notice to confirm that the methodology and standards that were applied were appropriate, but not that, not specifically the findings as related to the development itself.
Yeah, right. Um, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of that particular condition if everybody is comfortable with that. And then the miscellaneous conditions, um, Ashley added a couple and I'll, I'll let her comment on any of those, but, and these were requests from town employees. The first one is Tiverton Fire Department, the fire marshal or the fire chief must state the T, the Tiverton Fire Department's approval of the final plan with respect to fire hydrants and the emergency, and emergency vehicle circulation. They've already done that. But it, it should be, they should have another crack at it when we get the final plan done. Probably Ashley, is that, should the, the draft final plan, should they take another look at it? Or should we just accept what they've already provided in writing? We have something from Dan Murphy.
Without any substantial changes to the plan, I don't know that it's, it's necessary to have them look at it again.
Again, yeah. I, I don't think so either. I mean, they, if they're.
So disrespect to Dan Murphy, but we now have a new fire chief, as you probably know.
I think it would be a challenge to bring somebody in at this, this, a new person. Well, to bring a new person in at this point. I mean, you had a qualified individual review and approve.
I think we just review, what I was thinking, not to review, just, you know, checking with Dan, make sure. Never mind.
That's, that's up to the, to the board.
What's it, what do you have there?
Well, you do have.
Fire department. You have a fire department.
Fire marshal or fire chief.
You do have it in there for that part.
Yeah. So, so I, I think that, um, I, I think that that probably, and they will be given, the fire department will be given a copy of the final plans, right? Don't they, don't they, are they on the distribution list of that so that they can figure out how to get their equipment? Well.
Yeah, normally they, they have to approve the names of the, the names of the roadways in there in case they have an emergency call. They have to know where they are and they approve the naming of any development's names.
Yeah.
Right, typically a 911 coordinator approves the street names.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
So, um, so I think we've got.
So would you like to strike that condition?
I would like, I would like to strike that condition. I think it's already satisfied. I've had a number of conversations with, with, um, with Dan Murphy. He's, he's on board with all of this, I believe. So, um, the next one is, per the recommendation of Tiverton Materials, provide additional vegetative buffer along.
You skipped one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Of the 275 approved residential units, no more than 110 units, maybe three bedroom. That's 40%. And all others must be one or two bedroom. It turns out they're all two bedrooms. Did I get the numbers right, Jeremy? And, um, no units in excess of three bedrooms are permitted. And, um, and Jeremy, um, please make sure when you, if you design any three bedroom units with a den, that the den does not lend itself to becoming a fourth bedroom. We've had this conversation before. You know what I'm talking about.
And no Murphy beds in the kitchen, yeah, well.
Of course, once people move in, who knows what they're going to do. But, um, so I, I think that condition is kind of a no brainer. And then Tiverton Materials did want additional vegetative buffer along Fish Road, along the Fish Road property line. You know what? We've already got a, a landscape plan. And we're going to have a condominium association that's going to take over after you guys leave. And if they want additional vegetative buffer, they can plant it. But let's see, let's see how, um, let's see how the plan that we already have now works out. Um, I just picked that up from Lawrence McCarthy's letter.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And I don't think it has any impact on the vibrations whatsoever.
No, I'm not sure he was aware of the new, the landscape plan, uh, didn't get a lot of attention. It was a busy night and we put the plan in, there wasn't a lot of discussion about it, but that was, that was much clearer on landscaping, both on Souza Road and on Fish. I'm not sure that Tiverton Materials ever identified that that had been done. That was fairly recent.
Yeah, I'm going to recommend that we just drop that condition.
Okay.
And then, um, now the betterment fee, I didn't quite understand what the town administrator was getting to in a memo that several of us received recently.
Yeah, I mean, I can read his, his email and the concern he raised and I asked for specific language because this is not my area of expertise. But, and he did, I think he did reach out, but I, I didn't receive any updated language. But it says, since this project will require sewers and the town has divested the majority of searing authority to the Tiverton Wastewater District, there's one area that Tiverton Wastewater no law, has no legal authority to charge a betterment fee. That area is the actual tie-in to the interceptor line on Souza Road. The town still owns and operates the interceptor line from the industrial park to the Fall River Treatment Facility. Even though the developer installs the actual sewer in the project, the actual betterment fee is used to sustain long-term maintenance of the main line to Fall River. The developer must know there will be a betterment, a better fee for any building that ties into the wastewater system.
Yeah, I don't know about that. I, because we just had a project, uh, on Stafford Road. We went before the Tiverton Wastewater District and proposed to build another line, uh, between, from, to the Fall River, uh, tie-in. And they calculated and assessed to us a connection fee beyond the usage fee that was, I'm thinking it was like, I don't know, Tom Principi would remember, but it was thousands of dollars every unit. Major fee because it, we were going to pay for it, but the Tiverton Wastewater District was going to own that line. So there was no talk about the town of Tiverton as a town having jurisdiction over that length of line. This was off of, um, near the Saint Therese's Church there, right, right about there, the property, uh, down to Stafford Pond there that we were going to build a thousand feet of line to Fall River. And Tiverton Wastewater said that's, by the way, the first meeting I went to, I said, you know, the town is, is got to figure out and the, the chairman very quickly said, no, 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 we're not the town. We are the Tiverton Wastewater District. We made an agreement with the casino to do something along that same stretch of line where they paid a fee and you're the second ones along that are going to be negotiating a fee for, for that tie-in. So I, I question whether that's accurate, that the town of Tiverton still maintains authority as a sewer authority over that area. They've got Mr. Petrocker is their attorney. You know, he drew some pretty clear lines on what these fees were going to be. And we're talking about, you know, the same stretch of line there. So I, that's all I can suggest. I wouldn't have known any of this if we hadn't just covered this ground over the last couple of months on another project.
So Rick, so Rick Rogers has, um, may, may have some insight into this issue?
Yes. Stu, Todd, Bill, I, I wouldn't comment on the betterment fees, but just in the terms of the ownership. At some point, some of the infrastructure going forward was turned over to Tiverton Wastewater District, which is a separate entity than the town. But the town, from the pump station on Industrial Way, near 50 Industrial Way, heading west down Industrial to Fish Road, north on Fish Road, west on Souza Road, continuing on and then heading north towards Fall River. That segment of the line is not Tiverton Wastewater District yet. The plans are at some point, because of paying off the bond, et cetera, would be turned over to Tiverton Wastewater District, but the town still has. to Tiverton wastewater district, but the town still has responsibility and owns a large sec, section of the trunk line.
You're absolutely right, Rick, because we paid through Starwood and we paid the bond on that, coming in from down along the railroad easement up. You're right.
So Todd, this seems to me to be more of a legal issue than...
No, I think, I think it's simple. It's a condition that if the town owns a portion of the sewer line that services this project, the developer agrees to pay whatever betterment fee is required.
Yeah, to the extent that, that is, I, that was, that explanation was helpful to me because it's not the area of the other project at all. That was the, going to a different part of Fall River along Stafford Road, so that may be the, why it's different. So we just don't wanna pay too. That, that was our only, only concern, and, you know, whatever, whatever due authority the town has to assess for that condition is something that, you know, we've never sought a waiver from.
But whether we make it a condition or not, the town can assess you for, for tying in, a better, a betterment fee for tying in. So I'm not sure we need to make it a condition, but we could. We could make it a condition.
I think you just make it a condition.
Okay, okay.
To the extent betterment fee is due to the town.
So Ashley, you know...
Yes, we may be wording instead of a betterment.
The applicant shall pay the appropriate betterment fee.
To the extent the betterment fee is required to the town, developer shall pay it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this, this says, a betterment fee will be paid, so if we say to the extent that, excuse your language there.
To the extent a betterment fee is required...
Yeah.
...the developer shall pay it, right?
Yeah.
Which you would anyways, but...
Okay, now the final, here's another bullet, and this is a bullet that Ashley put in because this came up, this came up as well, that when Tim Tice did his analysis, he indicated that your project would, would, would bring the Tiverton, the North Tiverton Fire District pipe and pump water distribution system network up to 85 percent of capacity, right? And that maybe another pump would be, would be appropriate in order to give North Tiverton Fire District a little more capacity, because if one of their pumps goes down and they have to do some maintenance, then there could be a negative impact on the rest of the system. This, this just came up. I, I didn't see this until yesterday. This is not an old issue that's been kicking around for a while. It's new to me, and I've been paying a lot of attention to what Tim Tice has been saying. It seems to me to be a little late in the day to put a new condition on you with respect to additional pumping capacity. So Ashley, do you have any insights into this, or maybe Rick Rogers might have some insight into this?
This is a condition that was brought up in the same correspondence from the town manager, where I did ask for more specific language, but he raised an issue with water pressure.
I think it's a good one.
And I can, I can read his, his comment if that's helpful.
Yeah, why don't you do that, because, because we've been talking about water pressure for a long time.
So it says, "Based on the fact that the water distribution system will be at or exceed 85 percent once this project is completed, is there a process to require the developer to augment the pumping capacity at the distribution source as a condition of any approval? I believe power engineering may provide the planning board with data that suggests the normal maximum pumping capacity of 85 percent should be the threshold that the community slash water district should look at, making improvements to the sys, to the system to provide additional pump capacity to handle future maintenance when pumps are taken offline for repair and general maintenance issues, as without additional pumping capacity, the system could be left to operate with less than ideal pumping, which could reduce system pressures."
So Ashley, when did that comment come in?
Uh, that was an email last week, on October 26th.
Well, I, I think it's a little late to be coming in with that kind of comment, given the fact that we've been talking about this in some depth for a long time. I think it's unfair to the applicant to, to impose a condition at this point. When we had Tim Tice here, I remember asking him specifically at a planning board meeting, is, is he satisfied? And he said yes. He said nothing about additional pumping capacity or the 85 percent of capacity.
So I, I believe the comment came from a conversation between the town administrator and Mr. Tice. And I don't know the exact, exactly why it wasn't brought up at the meeting, and I'm not saying that you have to make it a condition of approval exactly the way that it's written, but you could ask the applicant to at least look into this as an issue. I, I don't know that you want to just disregard it at this point, just because it's, it's late. I don't think that it's something that you want that was brought to your attention, but you didn't at least take some level of effort to resolve.
But didn't, but didn't, wasn't there a full study that Mr. Tice performed that did not identify this as an issue or any issue? What I'm hearing you say is some future project. What I heard you say in that recital of that email is that some future project or projects could bring capacity to a level that, not this project.
So what, well, what it says the beginning of the email, and again, this is not my area of expertise. I am simply reading information that was brought to my attention I have no expert knowledge of. Based on the fact that the water distribution system will be at or exceed 85 percent once this project is completed, is there a process to require the developer to augment pumping capacity at the distribution source as a condition of any approval? I think the issue being, this project will bring the water distribution system to capacity at eighty, or at 85 percent, and that the concern is that if a pump goes offline, or if there's maintenance, or something else happens, there will be a drop in pressure because you're at 85 percent. So the, the request being, is there the ability to augment the pumping capacity in those circumstances?
Yeah, I just, you know, we, the par thing took forever to be issued. They issued one three years ago. They reaffirmed that they didn't identify any issues. It wasn't like that 85 percent was, you know, might have been a target, whatever. I mean, maybe if there's another project that comes along. The only thing they asked us to do is to do further analysis to augment the pressure at our distribution site from the, the water department on our site. We met with the fire chief. He, he felt that if we relocated some hydrants, that additional pressure would be moderated. Could be that those improvements drop it back down below further.
Well, that may very well be that what you're talking about would resolve this issue. I don't know that.
That's what I thought it was, actually.
So I think...
I understood the distribution site to be where it came, came to us, because, you know, they weren't able to get us all the way up the hill, basically was the case. And we either had to provide an additional pump there in order to keep the town from having to, to meet that need. And, or we had, and we left the building that, after the last meeting and met with the fire marshal. He says, "You don't need another pump. You just need to space these hydrants differently, have power engineer run a model to, to see if any additional pressure is needed beyond what the town could supply." Power engineering ran that model, "We provided it to you," and it turns out that relocation, which we showed on the new plan, adds the additional pressure. So I, you know, I think we've done everything that the experts wanted us to do in a very lengthy report. Mr. Tice was here to explain it. We're talking about hearsay that, I'm not even sure what they were talking about. We're, we're understanding it two different, two different ways, and we further augmented the pressure since when Mr. Tice was, Tice was here through design changes. So, I don't know, maybe that's what the town would, would prefer to have, but nobody's suggesting it's a health, safety, or welfare thing. I don't know who came up with 85 percent, is 85...
That's, that's the first time I've heard that number. And, and yes, I, I'm gonna call on Rick in a minute, but I'd just like to say that we have a process here, a deliberative process of going through some pretty technical issues. And when we do that, sometimes we put a lot of demands on the applicant, and we certainly did it in, in this respect, because, because our former fire chief had some serious concerns about not only pressure for fire suppression, but, but also impact on the rest of the system. And the applicant has done everything we asked, and now, at the very last minute, somebody is throwing a monkey wrench into the machinery, and I just, you know, I ju, I'm, I'm inclined to just disregard this, because it's too little, too late. And it does, and it, and it does not respect the process that we've been through, or the many hours that many of us have put into the, the water issue. So, now, going forward, we're gonna have to make darn sure that North Tiverton Fire District does have the volume and the pressure to satisfy the needs of new development, some of which is coming right down the road in the same neighborhood. But, but at this point in time, I think it is discourteous for the town of Tiverton to request any further modifications. Having said that, Rick, come on up and contradict me if you'd like.
No, thank you. No, I'm not looking to contradict or anything, just looking to possibly assist. Is, I'm guessing, at least, educated guess, that the administrator didn't come up with this comment on his own, and that the report from Tim Thies from power engineering raised some concern, and along the lines of, what's I just, my understanding of generally accepted practice is you don't wanna be going beyond 85 percent of capacity. So I think, and I cannot speak for the town administrator, but I think his point is, does the, is the town able to do anything in regards to that, as far as bringing any necessary improvements? And did the planning board get an understanding of what the report said? And did it point out anything in that report that should be, the town should act upon that 85 percent or anything else in the report? I'm not, I don't have the report in front of me, but I remember something about the 85 percent. So has the, has the planning board, whether it was in the past or not, the consulting engineer for the planning board commented on that report? Has anything, is anything in that report, you know, raising a red flag to the, to the planning board?
Not, not to me, and we specifically asked Tim Tice at a, at a former hearing, at an earlier hearing, about anything that he would recommend, and he had no recommendations at that time. So, and also...
Thank you.
I, I think it's important that we can't hold one application responsible for solving a problem that may occur when new developments come into existence. And we, we do have limited water capacity. We do have a very aging pipe and pump system in the North Tiverton Fire District, and so that is an ongoing concern, but we have to take this project by project, development by development, and not, I, my inclination is not to create a new condition here. I think we've, you know, I think we've, we've done, we've been very thorough on, on the water situation.
Just a clarifying question. Do we know that, because this information about the hydrant relocation, which the applicant is discussing, and came at a request of the fire chief, this was recently added, I mean, we just got this a week or so ago. Do we know if the town administrator and power has seen this and then taken the information from this and put it back into their calculation?
I, I think we're, this is talking about literally at the source, like, way away from anything to do, anything locally towards this project. What we did is just to make sure that we were having the right thousand gallons...
Right.
...at the location, and that was the study. Mr. Tice did a separate study that looked at the whole water system and made sure that we didn't have any adverse effects on the whole water system. He confirmed that we didn't. And he looked at the internals of the development. We had one, literally one hydrant that had like 30 gallons less. We moved a couple of hydrants to make, to make that problem go away. I don't think any of that has anything to do with what this is. This is something to do with, like, at the, at the distribution source. Like, I don't, this is the fir, I mean, this wasn't anything to do with, so I'm not really sure where this has come from. Mr. Tice never said anything about this, nor that our, our project impacted at all in our Tiverton system. So I don't really know what this is. This is the first time hearing of this.
As to your other question, Mr. Tice was aware of the hydrants being resituated. He was involved in that.
And blessed.
Yeah, and he, he, his report also covered the question of whether this would somehow be an impediment to future development in the industrial park. I mean, there were people asking him down the road questions as part of that lengthy report, so, right here, yeah.
And he was here testifying, so I...
No, no, no.
I don't even know, I really don't know what this is.
Well, I mean, it's, I don't think I can put words in the town administrator's mouth, but it sounds as though he's asking, is there...
He did ask.
But I don't think it bears directly on the system, I mean, I don't think he's making that correlation, but again, that's an inference, it's not a statement, so. But it was not raised at the hearing with the engineer when we were talking about all this. And we did ask specifically...
Right.
...about flow and about pressure and system degradation and so on and so forth, and that was not raised as a concern, so.
So was...
The information we had at the time.
Thank you, thank you, Peter. Well, I'd like to go on to, there's only one more little condition, and this also has to do with water. Enter into an agreement with the North Tiverton Fire District that authorizes the, the district to maintain the fire hydrants within the development under the condition that development pays for the cost of, of the labor, equipment, and materials necessary to provide this service. And that agreement has been made. So I guess what we're asking for here in this condition is just a piece of paper that shows that there is an agreement...
Correct.
...that both parties have agreed to.
Correct.
So there's not an issue.
Right, they agreed to maintain, but they want an agreement in writing.
I think I saw something on paper earlier on that. So with those, so those are our...
I would just add one more. I just want to, I know that we, Mr. Landry sent me the list of waivers that were previously granted, and I just think it's, it's important to state again that the waivers that were previously granted at the master plan stage of review are granted as part of the preliminary approval, so that those continue through the application at each stage.
Right, so we, we granted a waiver on, on the allowing multiple residents on a single lot, and we granted a, a density bonus, allowing you to put up, put, put in up to 275 units, one, two, and three-bedroom units. And I think there was, I meant to look this up today and I forgot to do it, but wasn't there a second waiver in addition to the two things I've mentioned?
There was a, there was a waiver that had to do with the application fee that was requested and, and then withdrawn, and we wound, wound up paying the, the consultant fee, it was like $91,000.
Five hundred.
So we withdrew that condition. It was like ninety-one thousand dollars, so we withdrew that condition. We also typically make a waiver request for a waiver of impact fees on the affordable units, and I have to say, I'm not even sure that's applicable here or not. I've lost track of what the impact fee structure was and is, but it is typical for the impact fees to be waived on not the market rate units, but on the affordable units.
But you would have to go before town council because only town.
Well.
No.
Yeah, and a cop plan is kind of one, one-stop shopping, you know, for, for anything that the town council would have been able to do. We're limited in what can be charged to the affordable units, and that's a waiver that's almost universally granted, at least that's to the affordable units, not the market rate units.
It's in the ordinance that the LMI units are exempted.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what you meant to say, not that it, okay, well, if LMI units are exempt, then we don't need a waiver.
Okay. But, but putting, but Ashley's comment was, it might be a good idea to, to put in our, in our deliberations tonight, in what we approved by motion tonight, that we have granted a density bonus, and we have granted a waiver with respect to that section of zoning that, that requires only one principal residence per lot. So, I can't remember the reference in zoning to that.
Just let me, it's zoning ordinance, Article twenty-two, impact fees, subsection D. Any new housing units that meet the definition of LMI? Yeah, that's, oh, section twelve, I'm sorry, section twelve D is exemptions, the following shall be exempted.
Yeah, that's fine, and that is pretty standard, but I, I apologize for not knowing that nuance. I had, it's usually a blanket request that's, that's made.
Okay.
I have a question on Mr. Landry's email, the attachments. What is this?
That is the plan that shows the revised hydrant locations. The, the other, well, I didn't copy very well, but there were two, two hydrants that were moved to satisfy that pressure issue, and there was a plan associated with that, that the fire marshal and Mr. Theis signed off on, and that, somewhere in that ant farm of information is, are those two relocated hydrants.
I mean, I've read emails, revised site plans, revised site plans have been given to this department head or that department head. We don't get anything, that's why I'm saying, then we get this.
Yeah, well, they were emailed, too, they can, that could be expanded.
We're not going to fight about this right now.
All right.
Okay, I think we, I think we can now take, take action, and, and again, how would you like to structure that? We will have a single motion that will include approval of conditions, findings of fa-, approval of findings of fact, approval of conditional, of a conditional preliminary plan approval. And with a further stipulation, that the final plan is also approved, provided that, is approved administratively, provided that all of the conditions that we have made tonight are satisfied and approved by the, by the planner AO. Is that about right?
Yes.
And when that happens, then, then Ashley will sign off, and, and then I can come in and stamp and sign, and we, and we can record. First, the preliminary plan, that can be done right away. But the final plan, when all of the loose ends are tied up and all of the items on the conditions list are satisfied.
You are not granting final plan approval at this point. That will be administratively done.
That will be done administratively, but you won't have to come back before us. Okay, so that's, so that's what we're doing, and should I restate that as a motion, or did I just do enough of that? So my motion is to, to approve. Oh, we haven't actually read the findings of fact. Should we do that? You've all been given copies.
You can adopt Ashley's memorandum dated.
So we can, we can adopt, we can adopt that.
So I have amended it as we have talked, and so you can say amended based on the discussion.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and so I've, I've amended one of the conditions to reflect the fact that they did provide you with the distribution of LMI units throughout the property. And then I've amended the conditions, as we just discussed, striking the ones that we've took, taken out, and amending the language of the ones that were agreed upon.
Okay, so my, so my, so my motion is to approve the conditions as amended on November first, and to approve the positive findings of fact, which can be found in amended form in, in the memorandum that, will you be doing a new memorandum dated November, November first, including the new, the slightly amended findings?
No, I mean, I've, I've kept track here of the changes, which, you know, we can keep that for the record, and then I will outline all of those amended conditions in the approval.
Okay, in the conditions, okay, but, but the findings, but to go on with my motion, that we're also approving the findings as stated in Ashley Sweet's memorandum of October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two, and that we are approving, conditionally approving, the preliminary plan. And finally, that we are authorizing the, the planner AO to approve the final plan administratively when all appropriate documents have been submitted and approved.
Won't that be another, a separate, separate agenda item, the final plan approval?
Nope, we're, we're doing it all.
It's not advertised as that, it's not advertised.
It doesn't need to be.
It's not, you are not approving final plan at this point.
You're conditioning preliminary.
Yes, granting that.
You're granting conditional preliminary. And then the applicant will provide a final plan submission to the planner. My job will be to go through and make sure all the conditions of preliminary are met on those final plans, and then to approve it.
As allowed by the general laws.
As allowed by state law.
This is a brand-new system, but I think it, it's a system that expedites things and keeps things moving, and it's good for the applicant because the applicant doesn't have to come back.
A second?
Steven, if the applicant does not submit everything that's required by the conditions, or if Ashley just doesn't feel comfortable.
I can refer it to the board.
That's what the state statutes, statutes permit.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and now we can have a discussion. Hearing no discussion, seeing no discussion. Then I would call the question, all of those who approve the motion, please raise their hand. Should we actually do a roll call on this? No, I don't think so, it's not controversial.
Raise your hands.
Okay, we've got one, two, three, four. Now, we're, we're in trouble here because we do need a fifth vote.
What's the objection, Ms. Eva?
No, abstaining, because I got, I get the information late, and I'm still.
We, to, to make this, to approve this kind of a motion, we need more than a majority of the, of the members present. We need five members, we need a majority of a nine-member board, so we really need your support here.
Mr. Landry, did they just change the state law?
They absolutely changed the state law to a majority of the members present, and I believe it became effective
In July.
and immediately.
Yes.
So we don't have a problem. Okay, so, four approve, and Rosemary, did you vote against or abstain?
I voted against.
Voted against, okay. And. And that's it.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Do a good job on those sidewalks, and Chris, don't do ugly sidewalks on Bogomar.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We're not quite finished, we have a few more agenda items we have to approve.
Bill, did you see Judge Todd Carter's decision kind of caving in Newcastle? She limited Newcastle?
Oh, she did.
That was just.
Thank you, Rick, you can go.
Thank you. That was my question.
Thank, and thanks for your contribution, it was very helpful.
Westerly. Okay, it's my case in Westerly. But Scott gets credit.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks. Hope you feel good.
Do you have to open a public hearing?
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, now, I closed the, I closed the hear-, I closed the public hearing on this, and this is gone, so we don't. We don't, but so I am, I am still looking for my agenda, oh, here it is, right here. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is, it, it turns out that the Suzano condominium, some of the key people at Oxford Development were not available tonight, so I get the call from Todd, what, about four o'clock in the afternoon? So actually, that worked out beautifully because it's going up for ten o'clock, and I'm getting a little tired, and we got an awful lot done today.
It's just a matter that they couldn't be present.
They couldn't be present, but they'll be with us in two weeks, and in two weeks, our, our agenda, can you refresh everybody's memory on what our agenda will be? We will have, I believe we will have the crematorium, the.
No, they're not until December.
Not until December. Okay, so, so next week.
It's a, a pre-app for a con- Stafford Commons, it's a pre-application.
That's the Deduca?
Yes.
Could, could we all get paperwork on that? I don't have any paperwork on it. I'd like it as soon as I possibly can get it, because, you know, I'd like to review things.
Yep, we weren't sure how, you know, that this was the, the agenda.
So Deduca is wonderful.
Can we wait to do this until we get to that on the agenda? Let's continue Oxford.
You need to.
Okay, well, okay, so what we need to do now with Oxford is we need to continue Oxford to, to November fifteen. And the time clock is very generous, it's way out to January eighteen, so we don't have to worry about the time clock, and we didn't have to ask Mr. Landry to extend the time clock. But I would like to make a motion to extent to, I'm getting so tired, I can't remember the appropriate word. To continue the agenda item three to our, to our special meeting on November fifteen, twenty-twenty-two. So I'm making a motion, do I hear a second?
I have a question, okay.
Well.
Second, if a discussion.
Let, let's second it, okay, now, discussion.
Okay, is this a public hearing?
No.
No.
Okay, it says public hearing, that's the only reason.
It's a public informational, oh, wait, yes, it is, because it's a comprehensive format.
Has it been advertised with?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to open the hearing tonight?
You just did.
You did?
Um, no, I, I just continued the item, but we do need to open the hearing tonight and then continue the hearing as well.
And then do a date certain?
I thought it was.
Okay.
I interpreted what you were doing as opening the meeting and making a motion to continue it. Is that what everyone else thought?
I thought so.
Okay, so, the meeting is officially open now, on Oxford?
So we only need one vote. I'm opening the, the public hearing on Oxford and, and moving to continue it to November fifteen, twenty-twenty-two. So only one vote is needed here, only one motion and one vote. Whereas in the old days, we used to do this in two steps.
How?
Well, we would continue the public, we would open and continue the public hearing, and then we would, then we would continue the agenda item.
One and the same.
I know, they're one and the same, but we would, we did it in two steps. Well, see, that's why you guys are.
Mr. Hardy made a motion to continue Oxford development to eleven fifteen.
So I've, we've got a motion, I think we have a second from Rosemary.
Are you offended?
I'm not offended.
And hearing, hearing no further discussion on that, all those in favor? Okay, and everybody did vote affirmatively on this one. And then that brings us to agenda item number four, planning board. A is approval of board minutes from October twenty-five, just last week's board minutes. And does everybody feel comfortable voting on that tonight? Or not, because we just got those.
Where are they?
I emailed those to everybody last night.
And they're at your place?
You certainly have reviewed them, Rosemary.
I have re-, I wrote them.
You edited them.
Here, you can have mine, they were at everyone's spot when you sat down.
Well, maybe they're underneath, Todd, graciously, both these things.
They're, I, I just picked mine up tonight, the hard copy tonight. I'm going to make a motion, since Rosemary edited.
And I edited that.
And, and we know that there won't be any mistakes.
No, no, no.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve these minutes.
The solicitor also helped.
Thank you.
And so I'm going to make a mo-, I, I move the approval of the minutes of October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two.
I didn't read them.
We can do it next week, Stu.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll do this, we'll do this in two weeks on the fifteenth, because we just, we just got these minutes, I haven't read them either. So, okay, we'll do that, and then the final item is planning office project status sheet and office updates discussion. I have one question, what is this DUDAC thing? Or, what is it?
Deduca.
Deduca, the du-, the DUCA, what is this? What is it? Tell me about it.
Just very briefly, because it's on.
Very briefly.
The November fifteen agenda.
So it's a, it's a pre-application, I don't ha-, I don't have anything in front of me.
Is it housing development?
It's, hold on.
I'm sorry, I have no idea about the project, I just know the name.
Retail office space. And contractor base space and storage area above that.
Oh, you're talking about the one on Stafford Road?
Yes.
Way up north, almost on the Thaw River border. No, that's been before us. But I don't have any plans on it, but I, but we have talked about it.
They did file as a pre-app, right?
They did.
Okay.
Yeah, conceptually.
Okay.
That's fine. Okay, I don't have any further questions on that agenda item. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the planning office project, project status sheet, and office updates discussion?
So I only wanted to, to provide you with kind of a background of, of, you know, what I'm trying to do with the memos that I'm, that I'm giving you. As, you know, Stu mentioned, we're, we're trying to streamline a little bit the, the discussion and the decision-making into, you know, a single motion that encompasses everything, where you, and I'm giving you the memo that, that outlines the, the facts of the application that you're basing your decision on, we're referencing the site plans that you're. that you're basing your decision on. We're referencing the site plans that you're deciding on, the date, you know, all of the information that's necessary. Giving you those draft findings, draft conditions. When you get those and you read through them and you've looked at the applications, you're more than welcome to contact me directly and say, I'd like a condition that says this or I think the finding needs to reference this. You know, Stu does send me his comments. You can all individually send me your comments. The goal being that we compile all that information into a document prior to the meeting that everyone gets. So everyone is on the same page. Everyone's looking at the same information. The decision is kind of laid out for you. You can incorporate it by reference as amended like we did tonight, which should really streamline decision-making. You don't have to read out all the findings of fact. You don't have to read through, you know, all of that information.
Because the applicant gets a copy.
The applicant gets a copy in advance. They're, they come into it knowing, you know, the same stuff that you, that you know. And hopefully that will make the decision-making process, you know, a little more seamless.
Tonight. It did, it, it, it made, it made things go so much faster tonight than they would have gone. And, and I think everybody is pretty happy with the way things turned out. So that, that's definitely the way to go, Ashley. So keep doing what you've been doing.
You do not need to agree with Ashley. I want that to be clear.
You don't.
You do not need to agree with.
You can tell me that you don't agree. You can tell me that I think that this needs to be changed and I can make note of that.
You know us well enough to know we'll tell you.
I, I do, but I think, I think it's important that, that Todd, that Todd, you know, reiterated that. And, and my, my feelings will not be hurt. I am simply trying to synthesize the information that we're collecting over a period of time and reviewing all of this. So that's why I encourage all of you, when you read the memo, if you have your own independent thoughts on it that are not there, send them to me and I can begin to incorporate all of that.
She's trying to take what you say during these hearings as well and put it in there, okay? So I don't want anyone to think out there here that she is making the decision for this board. By no means, all right? I wouldn't allow that. She doesn't want to do that either, all right? That's why conversation is very important.
So again, I encourage you, send it directly to me. I will work to incorporate your comments the best I can into the memo.
You know, I, I just wanted to say that it's incredibly helpful. It makes me feel better prepared because then I can go and review, you know, oh, when did that discussion happen and whatnot? I was gonna just offer one suggestion, which is similar to what happened tonight with that PAR discussion. If in the, you know, the rankings of whether people are sending them to you or your suggestions of conditions, if there is, this was referenced at such and such a meeting, so we could go back and go to the minutes, that would be really helpful. Just to bring it to that extra level because I feel like now the trail of information supporting documentation is all there. That's incredibly time-saving.
Oh, it is, it is, it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, discuss this again as we get further down and, and you guys are getting more accustomed to this. Happy to incorporate any of your suggestions that you think would improve the, you know, the way the memos come to you or what's contained in them. I'm, I'm, I'm always open to that conversation. There's always ways to improve, so.
The memos are excellent as far as the background information goes. I mean, it's very, very helpful, as Peter says.
Good.
Something we didn't get before.
That's it. I just wanted to make sure that every, you know, we all had that conversation so everyone understands where, what you're getting and why you're getting it and that, you know, it's, it's open to discussion and improvement in any way that you guys wanna offer.
Good. I have just a follow-up question. So the, the other document we got from the town administrator regarding the Pocasset Heights, that whole financial.
The fees, don't worry.
We don't have to worry about that.
I have to take care of that.
Okay. So that was.
It's an issue of application fees versus escrows.
Okay.
It'll be addressed.
And then if it's appropriate, now, Ashley and I were just offline talking in reviewing some of these proposals, especially for Souza Road condominiums and just looking at those site plans and the aerials. I was noting, I don't know if our office has the capacity to do this, but since we have all these various plans, one thing that would be wonderful to do, if we can do it, is to create a composite of that area that shows Bayview, Souza Road, Pocasset Heights, so on and so forth in context, in a plan. And I think that would be incredibly helpful for those of us who especially are visual people. So I know it's not a pressing thing because we've got lots to do, but if, in all your free time.
I did put a little something together for DOT.
Yeah, you had the parcels and then you just labeled them.
I labeled them.
I think Peter's.
As a comprehensive thing, as, which I do it for that.
There's no, there's no ArcMap or anything on those computers, I assume.
Or GIS.
GIS is all done outside. There is or there is?
There's GIS.
There used to be one.
There's web GIS.
Yeah, web GIS.
But there's no, like, ArcMap itself is not installed in either of those computers.
Yeah, we don't have that capacity. But is the thing that he's suggesting he did for DOT, is that something that would be visually useful?
It's just a very bland white sheet with boundary lines, Peter, and showing the roads. And then he labeled.
I mean, if it's something that the entire board would find useful, we, we have the capability to, to GIS map anything you want at Weston and Sampson. We have a whole GIS department.
Okay.
But it would.
It would.
What's that?
Take an aerial and the yellow lines around, like you put it on in Europe.
Oh, I mean, we would use, well, let me, let me back up. We would have the capability to do it. I would have to find out, first of all, what, what GIS shape files you have available. I have to imagine, because it's hosted on your web GIS, that you have a zoning shape file, you have a parcel shape file. We'd have to have access to those shape files for someone in our organization to be able to use that information, map it through ArcMap and create a map for you that would identify those locations. And maybe, I don't know what specific information you would want in there, calling out, you know, numbers of units or whatever, but we can map that. You just have to, you'd have to tell me to do it and to authorize us to, to do it. Because we'd have to, we'd have to bill you for it.
To just follow up on what Peter's been saying. First of all, Ashley, the, the person to talk to here in Town Hall is Dave Robert. He, he, he's kind of the computer expert and is expert in maps.
Okay.
And, and he's got a lot of, he, he can show you what, what you can do. But I just wanted to mention that, that the town does have access to some of the mapping systems that state agencies have, but only if you're a town employee. And if you're the town planner, you can go to the mapping expert at RIDEM and access all kinds of really good maps dealing with species, dealing with forest resources, dealing with water issues and water sources and wetlands that I can't go to. And so that's, you know, so that's something you might want to explore. You probably know that already, but you have access to, to all kinds of maps that would, that we don't have, that we laypeople and volunteers don't have access to because we're not town employees. And I don't think there's any cost to this. In fact, I know there's no cost to this. But only, only you can do it, but I don't have any requests at this point.
I guess the question is that do you all would, I, I feel it would be helpful for me, but would you all, you know, to see all of the projects we're talking about in context, in relationship to each other on a map, so we could see.
Everything that's been approved.
Everything that's been approved or is in process to be approved.
Are you talking about throughout the entire town or just specifically this, this area that where all this is happening?
Just in our favorite neighborhood where so many things are going on.
It's the Souza Main Road, Fish Road, that whole.
Are you looking for buildings to be placed on the map?
No, just, just to show us the plans.
Overlay of the, well, first it could be as, as Ashley's suggesting, depending on what maps they have, first it could just show the, the sites themselves and shading them by code of what the projects are so we see them. But then there could, you could have their site plans, which show building locations, driveway, egress, access, all that kind of stuff. So we'd understand the impact on the roadways and just seeing it all in context, which I always feel like we look at these things in silos.
Exactly. We look at things with, with, with blinders on one specific project at a time. And it, and it would be very helpful to look at the big picture. Because then we're gonna say, oh, my God, what are we doing?
Well, and if we have that as a template, we could later overlay if the map layers are there, you know, wetlands and other things, we, we could ask to see those impacts. But initially, just to get the, the geography and the, like, what's it look like altogether? That would be so helpful, I think.
There's a tremendous amount of information available through RIGIS that maps, you know, all different kinds of things like Stu was talking about. Wetlands, habitat areas, all, lots of stuff. What's specific to Tiverton that RIGIS doesn't have is your zoning and your parcel data.
And so that would be so helpful for us if we could include that because then it would show where our overlay districts are, how they relate, to see what we're talking about in relationship to our comprehensive plan. The other thing is, it makes the case to show all of that in context when we're negotiating with the state about road improvements and needs if we have a comprehensive picture of what the projected growth is.
So I think one issue with what you just raised, which I think is, is a, is a problem, universally is a problem. When you turn, like, when you go on web GIS and you flip on zoning, none of your overlays.
Come into place.
Come in. So I don't know if they're not mapped. I don't know what's, like, your, like, your form-based code overlay, that they, they only exist in that document.
Is that because it was never integrated with the state?
So I can't go.
Put aside the form-based code, but you can see the other ones.
You can see the zoning districts, yes.
The districts, but not the overlays, is what you're saying?
It would have been very helpful tonight for me if I knew exactly what was north of the Highland Heights, you know, that parcel for future planning too, as far as, you know, what, there might be another development.
So to, to answer your question, can it be done? Absolutely. We could, we could map your parcel data. We could map your zoning districts. We could, we could inlay the site plans on the properties.
Of all the various.
It's, it's all possible. It just, how, you know, how far do you wanna go? How, what do you, do you want that done? Do you want, you know?
I think the first step, if everyone, I'm not the authority here, is to say it would be great to see all the projects and maybe later the zoning can come. Just seeing what it is we're, we're dealing with in context.
The easy part of it is to grab your parcel lines and your zoning districts and simply map that area and then highlight the locations. That's pretty straightforward and easy. A second level to that would be, you know, putting actual site plans on to, because they have to scale, because you're taking a PDF, you're scaling that PDF, you're making sure that, you know.
So you can see it all.
So you could see it all in context, not just the locations themselves, but actually what's being proposed or what is on every lot.
If we could do that, those two things, that would be awesome.
So I'll tell you, we can do them, it, but it's up to you.
You have to get a price for it.
Right.
And how do we need Todd to request that officially?
We'll get a price first.
Okay.
Well, I need to know, I need to know, I would need to know the parameters of what we're looking at. So do you want everything that's under consideration? Every, like, things that are recently approved but not built, things that are built? Like, how far back are we going? How many, how many are we talking about?
Not built and under consideration, I would think. Stu, Rosemary?
Well, it would be nice to see the villages of Mount Hope Bay.
You could see those on the GIS map.
Built as well.
Build-out analysis, so we know what we.
But I think we should focus on, on one neighborhood. We should start by focusing on, on the neighborhood where so much is going on and there are so many, so many, there are water issues and traffic issues and.
Slightly south of Souza Road up to.
Yeah.
And bounded Main and Fish, basically, that.
Right.
So north of 24.
Right.
West of Fish.
Up until, I don't know, how far north? What's the next boundary on the north end that we want to?
Massachusetts.
Oh, no, not that far, not, not to Fall, not to the Fall River line. I'm not thinking that, right? We're just trying to make this a little bit.
What is going on in?
To Rockland, is it Rockland? Out?
Well, because the crematorium, for example, you know, if we go just north of that.
So that would.
That would be Warren.
24.
Warren.
I got that.
To Warren.
To Warren?
I think you, you don't even have to go that far, Pocasset.
To the cemetery.
That would be fantastic.
And you wanna map the zoning? Do you wanna map? I mean, anything that's in RIGIS is easy.
We, we do have our own budget. I don't know who, who manages the budget or who's authorized to make expenditures from the budget, but the.
You will.
You should.
You're the chair.
The board will.
I, I, I don't even have a key to Town Hall.
So we get a proposal and then.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting, entertaining that. I just think it's gonna help bring us to another level of understanding again.
In the interim, Ed, can you send to the board what you did for the DOT? Or clean, clean them up if you want to. What else?
There was, and I think, I'm not sure, not everybody was copied on everything, but Jay Edwards from the town council did follow up from some of the questions that came up about dollars for zoning.
Yes.
And so there, there's not an existing pool of restricted money. So whatever wasn't spent was turned back. But what he offered going forward, if we supported it or wrote a note about it, would be more than happy to put forward a budget request in a new budget, setting aside an allocation for the zoning improvements reform study that we've been talking about. So that's a time-sensitive thing and we need to understand what format we need to.
The November 15 agenda has, has an item. Planning Board Chair Letter to Town Council Regarding Rewriting Ordinances and Request for Funds to Be Budgeted.
Right, right.
So we'll discuss that.
As part of all of that.
And there'll be a very long attachment that goes, that is detailed, what needs to be done to bring zoning into compliance with the comp plan.
Fantastic.
A detailed memo on that, but, you know, I'll get that out to you in the next few days. But in addition to that, it would be nice to know if the, if the, if the $20,000, roughly $20,000 that were spent on updating zoning.
Resulted in?
What that resulted in. Is there a paper product? Is there, is there a deliverable? Is there, you know, because money was, because Denise Surratt, who's our town treasurer, shows dispersments to people, but we don't have any.
Evidence.
Evidence of it. So it would be nice if somebody would snoop around. And I know that Sue Gill tried to, tried to find out if any, you know, you know, if anybody had anything and she was not successful. But, you know, but the planner, well, the planner's gone, you know, so. I don't know who was tracking that.
A couple times. A couple times over, so.
So.
Two weeks, as well as annual.
See, see, in two weeks and thanks for coming and.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the 15th agenda, is there a calendar for the next year?
One of the items is the calendar for 2023 as well as the 2023 budget.
Ed and I discussed it the other day, so good.
That is on the agenda.
A draft for us to look at.
Good, good. Okay.
Anything else?
Thanks for putting up with these special meetings. But I think we're now beginning to learn how to do things a little more, um, a little more efficiently without losing any of our oversight responsibilities, so. And hopefully things will slow down a little bit as the economy goes downhill. So, good. A motion, a privileged motion?
Oh, God. Uh, I'll make a motion at 10:02.
We are adjourned.